Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting and call this public session to order. And Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Ziprick.
Present.
Councilman Peterson.
Present.
Councilman Sapeskew.
Present.
Mayor Potemperie-Riggsby.
Here.
Mayor Brower.
Here.
All present.
We have been meeting in closed session before the open public session previously. And as listed on your agenda, there's a couple of items that were considered in the closed session. And I would like our city attorney to update us and provide a report related to that session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the redevelopment agency agenda, item one was a conference with legal counsel. The same item is listed on the city council agenda as item 1B. And that matter was discussed. There was a report from the city attorney to council and a direction given, but no action to report other than the city council did authorize the filing of appropriate legal response in that matter. On the city council agenda, item 1A, there was a report to the council and there's no action to report at this time on that.
Thank you for that update. As was mentioned, obviously, we have reconvened as listed on the agenda. And now it is time for our invocation and pledge of allegiance with Councilmember Peterson.
Father of us all, for so many blessings of life, we thank you. Thank you for this day and the opportunity to serve. This wisdom tonight is really great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. This brings us to the part of the agenda for oral participation from the public on any item that's not listed on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, again, please ask you to wait until that item comes up. If there's any items that anyone would like to bring to our attention that aren't on the agenda, now is your chance. Seeing -- I'm sorry, I do see Dick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I turned a slip in for you, whether you've gotten it or not.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it. But anyway, please proceed.
I saw a program the other night that struck a little bell with me. Thought I would give it to you for maybe a little information and future consideration. It was a night line dealing with the recycling in this country. And they were saying that the bottom has really dropped out of recycling market. What was $160 a ton for cardboard is now 25. And they were showing several different recycling centers where I'm not exactly sure whether it's on the East Coast, but I think it's pretty similar across the country. Glass is going to Canada, basically. Paper, cardboard, aluminum, that kind of thing going over to China, Japan. There really isn't that big of a market. And the recycling centers are starting to stockpile what they can. They take cars, grind them up, and put them in on a conveyor belt, goes over and drops into like your stuff that comes out of the coal mine, inverted cones, and then they just keep spreading it out and filling it up. The thing that hit me at that point was what happens if states mandating our 50% recyclable cutback? And if that is still going to be in effect, your recycling centers can only take so much for so long before they fill up their lots. Then they were saying that they are paying a company, recycling center paid a company to come and pick up the curbside containers. They then had to, once it was brought to the center, turn around and put that back, pay somebody to take it off the lot. So they're not making hardly any money, if any. Two things pop up. How long do they go and stay in business before they go out? And then who's going to collect it? The second thing is, if we have to collect it and keep it because nobody will take it, how long before the lot fills up? They're not going to rent space or land to put it on because two things occur then. How do you do it and keep it from becoming a problem? And secondly, what happens when that doesn't happen? Could they turn it back on to the cities and say, "It's your problem. We'll recycle it and give it back to you." So I was thinking it might be a little heads up to be ahead of the game to say, maybe we can talk to the recyclers that we've got with Republic and say, "How long before something really becomes a problem?" And maybe put some ideas and plans together so that if it does happen, you don't hit the wall and say, "Boom, now we've got to deal with it." And that would be short, but just as a point of interest for you.
Thank you. We definitely live in interesting times. Any other items that aren't on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to our formal agenda. The first item is a report regarding EMS fees that have been an item of potential interest and discussion for a number of years. And we have some new information and obviously some new leadership in our fire department that we're very thankful for. And I would like to turn the time over to Chief Bender to present this information for us.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council. As you mentioned, the department had asked to evaluate what revenue enhancement opportunities might exist for emergency services, in particular, emergency medical services that the department delivers in pulling the region, our local cities surrounding us. We found what typically is in place are there are a variety of paramedic, specific paramedic taxes, utility users' taxes, some Melrose taxes from housing developments. But looking a little broader, have found some very successful, what are referred to as paramedic membership and fee-for-service programs that are in place. In looking at some of our goals and really trying to look at something that would be focused on the end user, many are which are non-residents of the community, and considering all options, it was pretty obvious that the, this model of all the options was probably most in line for our community at this time. We then engaged the Aberus Group consultants to do a feasibility study to see if this program would work in our community. They have prepared the study. That is before you in your package. And Ken Riddle from the Aberus Group is here to present the study and describe the fee-for-service membership and fee-for-service program for you now. So, Ken.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As the chief said, Ken Riddle with the Aberus Group. And it's a pleasure to present the findings of our study for you tonight. If I can make sure this works. The study we come, and basically, I believe you've all received written copies of the study. I'm kind of just going to bullet point through those. We conducted the study between June and August of this past year. Primarily, the purpose of the study was to look at and explore alternative funding that would potentially generate revenue for the city through the fire department services, primarily EMS first response services. We agreed upon six strategies, and I won't spend a lot of time on those, but primarily we looked at the past studies that the city had conducted in 2001 and in 2005. We did a survey process of six communities in California that have these type of programs in place already. We looked at the probable payer mix and made some assumptions on collections and roughly some estimates on what you could potentially expect to receive. We also conducted analysis and forecasted revenue and cost for implementing both these two programs that we're going to present tonight. We had bullet pointed an action plan for the city to take a look at if they decide to move forward. And then we were asked to possibly provide some support in the future. This is information I'm sure that you're all familiar with already. Roughly 23,000 residents in Loma Linda, 7.8 square miles. The fire department response area is a little larger than that because of mutual aid and automatic aid agreements that they have. In 2007, the fire department responded at 2,180 emergency medical service responses and roughly 100 more in 2008. That comprises about 71% of the total fire department response. Since 2000, the department has staffed a medic engine and a medic squad with paramedic level personnel providing advanced life support services. The six cities that we looked at were Anaheim, Corona, Huntington Beach, Montclair, Norco, and Orange. In addition to the cities, I also spoke with a representative of Whitman Enterprises, which is a third-party billing service that bills for a lot of cities, both ambulance transport as well as EMS first response fees. Looked at first response fees, membership programs, and then briefly at potential other fees that the fire department could charge. This is a kind of summary of the results. And you have a copy of this. I'm going to kind of summarize it on the following slides. But you can see there's, there is, there is a significant amount of revenue that can be derived from both these programs. All of the fees and EMS membership programs were adopted by city council through a resolution and a city ordinance. Response fees ranged from $100 all the way up to $387. And revenue was $114,000 to $2.5 million. I didn't include Huntington Beach's revenue because they have it mixed in with their ambulance transport, and so it was a little misleading. They were not able to break that out. Some cities have a different fee for basic life support versus advanced life support. Most of the cities also have a resident and a non-resident fee schedule. Four of the cities actually use a third-party billing service. One city does their own billing. And one of the other cities actually trades dispatch services with the private ambulance company in exchange for billing. The billing costs range from 5.5% to 19%, which is a pretty significant variation. The lower percentage represented a city that also had this billing service doing ambulance transport billing for them as well, not just first responder fees. Some private medical insurance programs will pay for the fees. Medicare will not. If you're a licensed ambulance provider, Medi-Cal actually does pay $118 per EMS response. Most automobile insurance policies will pay the fees, although there's a cap usually on how much the policy covers. The collection rates from the cities varied from 30% to 40%. 85% were self-pay, and 15% was from insurance. And this was from Whitman Enterprises. Switching to EMS membership programs, again, EMS membership programs were enacted by city council resolution and ordinance. The annual fee for the membership ranged from $24 to $60. And the annual revenues that were generated were $24,756 to $1.8 million. All the cities that were surveyed billed on a utility bill, whether it was a garbage bill or a water bill, $2 to $5 per month. All of the cities both have a residential EMS membership program as well as a business program. The membership programs on some of the cities covered all the household, all of the cities covered all the household members. Some of the programs actually covered guests that were visiting. The EMS membership fees for businesses were based on commonly five employees or at a cap of 100 employees and different numbers for that. The employees were only covered while they were at work, so if their employer provided that, they did not, they were not a member at their home. And let me explain the benefit of the EMS membership program is that if you decide to enact an EMS response fee, that members would not have any out-of-pocket costs because there's basically an insurance policy. But you would still bill their insurance company and, you know, take that revenue. They just wouldn't have any out-of-pocket expense. Residential participation ranged from 30% to 98%. Commonly, it's in the 35% to 40% range. The one city that had 98% actually had a program on their utility bill where you had to opt out. In other words, you were going to get billed for that EMS membership, whether you, if you didn't recognize it, you needed to check a box to say you didn't want to be. Participation has to be voluntary. There was a court case here in California because prior to this court case, most cities just added it to the water bill, and you paid your water bill, and you remember whether you knew it or not. Since then, now it has to be real clear that you accept and you opt in to participate in the membership program. The benefits ranged from a complete waiver of any fees or just no out-of-pocket fees and accepting whatever the insurance payment would be for the EMS response fee. Some of the membership programs had extra benefits such as scheduled CPR training, home safety inspections, and other public education-type programs that were provided by the fire department. The marketing budgets were from $0 to $100,000. Most cities included some type of an advertisement or information with the city utility bill. Usually, the membership drive is on an annual basis, primarily before you're getting ready to work on your upcoming budget. Some of the, most cities have brochures or flyers that can be mailed to citizens. People, for example, live in apartments, maybe don't get water bills and may want to be members, but wouldn't have that opportunity by the water bill. Only one city actually spent money on pens and magnets and things like that. That was the city that had $100,000 budget. Most cities advertise their EMS membership program at any city-sponsored event through posters, flyers, or a booth at a health fair, things like that. Very few actually advertise in the newspaper with the exception of cable TV, city-owned cable TV channels. The other fees that we looked at were standard fire inspection permit and fire fees related to fire protection plans checks, nuisance, false alarms. There are fire departments that have policies that after the third false alarm in the six month period where they find a business. Some fire departments rent out, so to speak, their training facility to community colleges, et cetera. A lot of fire departments charge hazardous materials fees. And then some do cost recovery for DUI-related responses. We looked at the payer mix provided from the Loma Linda Medical Center University Emergency Department. And there is a chart and a table in your written material. And we would estimate that you would collect about 30%. This is in line with what Whitman Enterprise bills in the, for first responder fees. They collect around the 30% to 40%. They do much better with ambulance transports because more insurances actually pay for that. The market rate for EMS response fees, again, was between $100 and $387 per response. We would recommend a $300 response for Loma Linda residents and a $400 response for non-residents. The annual, the potential annual revenue would be up to $211,000 just for EMS first response fees. And that's taking into consideration a 30% collection rate. These were the calls from 2007. There was 1,676 to Loma Linda residents at a $300 charge, a little over half a million and 30% of that would be $150,840. 503 non-resident responses with the 30% collection rate would generate additional $60,000. The actual revenue received would be reduced by the number of members who participate in the membership program. You would not, you would only bill their insurance, but if they didn't have insurance, obviously, you're going to waive the fee because they're a member. So depending on the amount of members, that number would be adjusted. The non-resident revenue, obviously, would remain the same. On the EMS membership program, the range, again, was $24 to $60. We would recommend that you look at a $48 per resident fee. And your estimated revenue for that first year conservatively would be roughly $107,000. Using a conservative estimate, 25% of the residents would want to become members and then 20% of the businesses. You would expect that the membership, the numbers of people enrolled in the membership program would increase over the years as the word gets out or it's marketed. Minimal card, when we look at the cost for both these programs, for the EMS response fee, it's very minimal. Startup, primarily, staff time for processing medical reports and other administrative activities, billing service expense, and I estimate it high at 20% of fees collected. Based on your projected revenues of $211,000, you would be looking at a billing cost of $42,240. And certainly, you can negotiate that fee. For the EMS membership, the primary cost for marketing, printed materials, and again, staff time to administer the program. For your first year, we would recommend a marketing budget of $15,000 for postage and printing and advertising. Through the study that we've done for the city, it is feasible and practical for Loma Linda to implement a fee-for-service program and an EMS membership program to offset the cost of providing paramedic-level service through the fire department. Combining the revenue is close to $262,000. And you can see, we just added the EMS response fee minus the billing cost, and then the EMS membership program minus the marketing cost. To implement the EMS response fee, you would need to develop a written description of the program and the program's guidelines, determine what the appropriate fee that the city would want to implement, draft and pass a resolution and ordinance for the EMS response fee, communicate with the public through press releases, city publications, and whatever other communication means that the city has available, determine the billing process, whether it's internal, negotiate with the local ambulance company or use a billing service. And we would recommend a billing service or experts that, making sure it's all done legal and getting you the highest amount of dollars. Obviously, negotiate with the billing service. They would need to add on the patient record, insurance information, so that the billing could be done if they have an insurance policy that will pay for that first response fee, EMS fee. Most cities have a hardship program using the federal poverty guidelines. Some cities will waive the entire fee if you meet those guidelines. Some will accept payments as low as $25 a month until the fee is paid. That would be an internal decision. Provide training to the fire department and regarding the fees and the billing process and how that works, because they would be asked questions by the public. Sign the processing of patient records and billing the appropriate staff member, and then develop a system for monitoring EMS system payments and billings, and also cross-referencing responses with the members of the EMS membership program. For the membership program, same process, basically develop a written description of the program, guidelines, member benefits, determine an annual membership fee, and then city council resolution, city ordinance. Let my things up. Develop a communications plan to share the EMS membership program and market it to the public. Add language to the city, a city utility bill, whether it be a water bill or a garbage bill, regarding the EMS membership program and the monthly fee and process to become a member. Develop a membership application process for citizens that don't receive a city utility bill. Assign program responsibility to appropriate staff member, and then provide and develop a marketing budget. Develop the marketing materials, market the program, and then, again, having the EMS membership database to be able to cross-reference with responses so that those members don't receive a bill for an EMS response. And just to conclude, we do feel, again, it is feasible and practical for the city to look at offsetting the cost of providing paramedic-level services by our department with a fee-for-service program in conjunction with an EMS membership program. Certainly, ask and answer any questions that you may have this time.
Thank you for your report. If I could just highlight one other item in your report that I think is important as background. I think a lot of the residents are aware that in 2000, the city implemented a full paramedic program with the fire department. Before that time, we had relied on paramedic services with our ambulance company and so forth, and it had problems with adequate service. There was certainly concern that we were providing adequate services, and that was the impetus for expanding and adding a higher level of care. The next year, 2001, city council was concerned about the increased costs that definitely are associated, and had a study that looked at some similar items such as you have, chose not to take any specific action to implement that. Also, in the year 2005, went through a similar process. Why are we back here tonight? Well, I think all of us, obviously, are concerned about where finances are going in our state and unfortunately, also in the city, especially in some of the interacting circles that go there. So that's at least a brief background of where we've been, how we've gotten here, and now we have this issue before us. So would like to see if there's some questions for either fire chief or consultant. chief or consultant.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, one other thing. We did actually contract with, I think, City of Redlands to do a collection of some type briefly, which somehow didn't work, and I'm not, never did, I never was clear why that was so unsuccessful, but it was. Anyway, it was unsuccessful, basically.
My recollection-
Totally different project. That was for cost recovery for traffic accidents and other costs, really unrelated to what we're asking you to do.
Yeah.
I have a number of questions. Has your company was, has it been involved in actually implementing a program like this in any of the cities that you studied?
We have not.
You have not. Have you done it in any other city?
We've not done a similar study, but as a result of the study, and with the state of the economy, there's certainly a lot more interest in cities and counties implementing these types of programs. They actually started in the early eighties, so they've been around for quite a while.
How do you determine whether someone's a resident or a non-resident?
Well, they have to sign up to be a member, and you would need a, an application process of some sort, and you would base it on, you know, whatever the city residency boundaries are. The other purpose of having the application process is to capture insurance information so that they don't get a bill, but I, I mean, it would be a Loma Linda resident is, it was the way that we explained it, or the way that we're viewing it.
So it's not an issue of actually going to someone's house and determining whether that person actually is a resident or a visitor to that house?
Part of the information we glean on any EMS incident is a physical address for that patient.
That's fine for now.
I think this question is for the chief. Could you describe the types of programs that our surrounding communities have, and?
We do. Again, City of Redlands, City of Ucaipa, both have paramedic, specific paramedic taxes for paramedic services. City of Colton has a utility users' tax, bills for or taxes eight different utilities, and it goes from there. I think it's all pretty similar. Highland, reading a survey, also had a paramedic tax as well. San Bernardino City runs a version of a fee-for-service and membership program as well, so at least the immediately bordering cities all have some form of revenue enhancement tool in place currently, majority of those being just a broad-based tax. Most typically, a, say, a five-dollar fee that comes on your water bill is, is most common, at least to the immediate cities around us.
So if we impose this kind of program, we would certainly not be unusual in the area?
I suppose not totally unusual, maybe showing a little more focus on the end-user against, a number, quarter of our EMS responses are to non-residents, so instead of a broad-based approach, it would be trying to focus who's actually, on who's actually using the service.
Another question I have for you. How would you address residents who are in nursing homes? I know that usually in nursing homes, if someone's having breathing issues, they call the paramedics or the fire department, and they might go to the hospital, they might not. Who would you be billing at that point?
Their insur, their insurance. All those people have a physical, physical address as well. It's typically not that care facility. In the, and the recommendations are to build some of that program guidelines. Can, do you see that?
Some of the cities actually have, like, an assisted care living or a nursing home facility, actually buy into the membership program as well. Otherwise, you would just bill the, you know, obviously Medicare's not going to pay for it, but if they have other insurance, then you would bill it.
I think our goal would be to bring the facility under the membership program so in some way their residents are covered or bill their insurance.
Do you get a fair amount of calls, repeat calls, where you end up going to the same house several times in a given year?
Yeah, we do.
And they don't actually go to the hospital, but you just kind of respond?
Most of our, most of our calls, we do, are transported. We do have a pretty unique population of private care facilities, so there's private homes that have been transformed into private care facilities that we are at multiple times, multiple times a year, and you're probably familiar with, they're popping up all over, all over the community. So we're at those facilities on a regular, repeat basis, yes. In terms, there's a few just private residences we are as well. I'd say majority of the repeat calls are to some form of assisted living or private care out of the home scenario.
Now, the paramedics arrive regardless of what the call is. So if you go to someone's house and, I don't know, they got something stuck in the, in the tree, a cat, I guess, how would you determine whether, whether that's going to fall in the category of medical response versus just emergency response?
It's, it's, it's if care was delivered to the patient. There's actually patient care involved. That scenario wouldn't even generate an EMS patient care record.
That was a, that, the issue of the large number of elderly board and care homes that we have in Loma Linda was a concern of us when we talked about this previously. And is it not possible to build in a fee for that into their business license fee? I mean, because these, these definitely are a huge strain on our department, and that could simply be part of a business license because it's the cost of doing business.
Certainly. Most of the businesses out of the cities we surveyed, for every five employees, they would charge the forty-eight dollars if that's around. Some of them had different numbers, but you have the flexibility to design the program however you want, and that's, that's a great idea to do it like that.
I guess I'll wade in with my comments then, if there's no others. One quick question. I assume we could do either a fee-based or a membership-based only, but you're recommending the combination, correct?
You could do a fee by itself. The, the big benefit of the EMS membership service is you get that revenue in continuously, and the incentive to become a member for a resident is so they don't have that out-of-pocket expense for any EMS response. So you could certainly do a fee, a standalone fee, without a membership program.
In general, I think I would like to state right up front, whether we call it revenue enhancement, whether we call it a fee, whether we call it a tax, let's not play games like the state legislature. Yes, we are looking to get additional revenue, potentially, and call it a fee, call it a tax, whatever you might. I know there's legal distinctions, but I don't think this council is one that is going to try and play games like that that I think's been done. The reason I think, unfortunately, we probably need to do something like this, even though it's, it's never pleasant, is, you know, as was mentioned, we've stepped up to the plate to provide what we think are first-class medical services. We've been able to pay for those so far with other revenue, but I don't think we're going to be able to continue to do that indefinitely based on our financial picture. Number two, also, it seems a little odd that, as you mentioned in your report, MetiCal, a number of insurers, such as automobile insurers, will definitely pay for this. Why leave that money on the table that we're not capturing when, when I feel we're entitled to that based on that information? And so, you know, again, my personal opinion, I'm persuaded that we are to the point where we need to do something. I like the idea of the lower resident fee. I like the idea that at least you have the option of the fee for service versus the membership, so I think in general, like what I see. But said enough, and I'll turn it over to the council, either for more questions, comments, or for action as they see fit.
Just one, one follow-up question. If, I think we talked about sometime past, when we were looking at this issue, if somebody wanted to sign up after they needed the service the first time, is it possible to allow people to do that?
Again, you can design it however you want. Many of the cities allowed people to become a member of the program to avoid getting, you know, they, nobody expects to have an ambulance or a fire department, paramedic respond, but I think almost every city except one allowed you to become a member after the response and waived the fee.
Okay. Is there a minimum term?
They had to pay the full year.
The cities I, in reviewing the different programs, there was a, it was a one-time, hey, you had your experience, you had, you needed the service, you weren't fully aware of the, the membership program. Yes, we'll let you this time, go ahead and become, your cost is the cost of a membership, you're covered for the year, but moving forward, now you're aware of the program.
Unfortunately, widespread awareness of that kind of policy could eviscerate your membership drive.
Well, you know, I think that maybe it would be fair, in that case, you either get billed the fee or you buy a two- or three- or five-year membership.
Make it cost, make it cost the same as the, as the fee.
We, we do have a long agenda tonight. If there's not any more pertinent questions, then I would like to look for a direction.
I don't have a question, just a general comment. I do agree with you that what may appear to be a service is really, may be construed by many as basically a tax that wasn't there before. Having said that, I think most people are very wary of having their taxes raised, and I think that residents do expect us to provide fire services to their communities and medical services, and they do pay property taxes for those services. Nevertheless, if there's ways for us to recoup some of that, I think it's definitely a worthwhile goal. Having said that, I think it's important that we notify all residents of what we're proposing, so we don't find ourselves, you know, inundated with a lot of complaints. I think we need to further look at it, really study to make sure that we implement it in a way in which is fair, in which we don't end up having issues. We have to, you know, decide specifically who's gonna, what type of service are we actually gonna charge for, and I, I would like to get more input from the residents as to how they feel about the possibility of, you know, now having to be charged for what they thought was one of the services they got as being a resident of Loma Linda. So I think before we actually pursue it full-fledged and study it, I would recommend that we really do a good job of notifying the residents, saying that the city of council of Loma Linda is seriously pursuing this program, and maybe look into what program we want to put together, and hopefully get a lot of input as to whether that's something the residents, you know, really agree with, and then take it from there.
I guess, just one, one thought back. Naturally, if the way you've got it framed, people are likely to say, you probably know the response you're going to get, which is what you just said, we would prefer the city not raise that. And I guess one of the questions, and of course, you're, you're hitting the very issue that's been debated over several years. I think that's the reason the council's been so reluctant to do this, and I was just trying to think of a way, if we're forced to do this, is there a way of mitigating it so you're not, you're not hitting someone with a large fee, you're giving them a chance to become a member for the much smaller fee. But, I mean, you're right. If, if we were to go out and do a public opinion poll, I think most people would say, please don't charge. I mean, you're, you're exactly right. So I don't know if, if it's the opinion of the council that we've reached the point where we don't have a choice, or whether we still have the option to not charge.
My concern is I just don't want to see residents, if we do adopt it, be completely shocked to suddenly find themselves getting bills for things that they weren't even aware that they started getting billed for. So that was one of my concerns of notifying the public.
The one, the one reason I threw out the other comment was because you're exactly right. If somebody got a larger bill, they would be shocked. Now, if they can take a bill that's one-tenth that size, that's more nominal, they, they would realize, it's kind of like getting to join the auto club after you need to get towed. You don't get that option in AAA, but here you would.
If I may, the specific recommendation that we had from, I believe, our fire chief or consultants and staff was to adopt these recommendations and to look at the actual implementation and things, such as how notifications would go out, obviously, when it would start, et cetera. So I think we do have some of those elements in there, but it's up to, it's up to the council whether to move forward with these recommendations, move forward with some other action, and looking for your action on that recommendation or another recommendation that you would like to make.
Another possibility is, is to, after we've heard, you know, the input tonight and from everybody, and, you know, certainly we're going to be hearing from the public as well as to send back to the committee, you know, for, to flesh something out and bring back a specific recommendation, a dollar amount, in terms of how we deal with the, with the board and care homes and so on. That's a possibility.
I am still concerned that if we move forward and we just adopt the program, and then we implement it, we're going to be inundated with responses like we got when we put in traffic cameras. Wow, I didn't realize I was starting to get tickets just for making a right-hand turn. So in order to, my concern is, I'm not necessarily against the program, I just think that we need to do a better job of notifying the residents as to what is being proposed, so they're not so shocked and surprised. That's my concern.
Looking for specific action on this item. Try not to make a motion as chair.
One last question that maybe would, I was looking for the answer, and I think maybe it was alluded to. If you had a facility, like a board and care home, retirement home, nursing home, how do they join? They, they have to have a larger, a larger membership fee, because they're not just one person, they're going to be a whole.
There's a number of ways we could approach that problem, and do it on a per-bedroom basis. We could do it on a per, how many people are in the, in the household, but we intend to bring back to you all the specifics, including the last chance or the first chance option, and all that will be laid out in a program that we bring back to you. All we're asking for is permission to go ahead.
I move we, I move we go ahead and have the, have the staff flesh it out and bring back to the, you know, the dollar implementation.
Based on the recommendations in this report.
I, I would second that with an amendment to it if we could, which is initiate some program in which we're actually, go ahead.
Sorry, just to make it clear, so we've moved and seconded it. Now, it would be, trying to make sure I do this procedurally right, if there's amendment to add to that, now would be the appropriate time, if it's okay, to entertain that as a second.
That's fine.
And now, any amendments to, to the original motion?
I would amend it so we would have some system in place in which we're actually, actually notifying every single resident in the city of what we're about to undertake, other than just putting it on, you know, council agenda. Most people don't even pay attention to council agenda. So I actually would like for the city to initiate some program in which we're notifying every residents as to what we're studying and implementing.
Are you proposing to make that announcement before or after we set up the program?
At, in this process right now. So as we, as the city staff implements it, we're also notifying every resident that this is what we're-
What if we don't know what kind of program they're going to specifically come forward with, then?
That's fine, but at least every, every resident is made aware of what we're initiating, so at least they have an opportunity to weigh in, because I think at this point, I would venture to guess ninety-nine point nine percent of the residents have no idea what we're about to approve.
Well, I, it would be, isn't it possible to send a note? Well, I, it would be, isn't it possible to send a notice that this is what the city council is considering in the water bill? I mean, everybody gets that. So, we could send out the water bill saying, this is what we're considering. We're considering, you know, we don't have, and, and specifics will be coming in at a later date when again you'll have a chance to see- Yes, we can do it. That could be a, a two-step process.
And I might be presumptuous, but seeing Chamber of Commerce Director and so forth here, potentially maybe we could work information into that. And I think there are some numerous avenues with that, so.
Could go on the channel.
And just a, a little counter to the public ignorance comment, the, I would bet that most people don't, don't think that we're currently not being paid for this. I think most people probably think, you know, the fire department shows up first, save my life, and then the AMR transported, I think the fire department's probably being paid. I don't think they realize we're not.
Sorry, just to digress, I think most, or at least a lot of individuals aware, again, all these calls, probably hearing right now, that AMR will send out bills greater than $500 every time they show up. But somehow, we as a city are, so far, have been willing to give that service for free and so forth, in that sense. Anyway, we could either formally make that an amendment to the main motion, or if there's consensus to include that with the original motion as far as notification with utility bills, the website, the cable TV through chamber documentation, is that acceptable to the original maker of the motion and second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to move forward with these recommendations. Obviously, some of the specifics will come back, but at least the framework as listed. All those in favor of that action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, thank you very much. Next item, item three listed on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, and it's a general plan text amendment with, won't read all the details, but I will let Community Development introduce this item and explain what all these things mean.
Mayor Brower, members of the City Council, good evening. Before I begin, there's the two applications that are on the screen. One is for a general plan amendment, another one is for a conditional use permit. But in addition to that, I also have a sample material board if the council would like to take a look at this. But also, we'll have the colored renderings that we'll show in the presentation. But before I get into the applications, let me give you some background information. As indicated on the aerial photo on the right hand of the slide, what we're looking at is on the south side of Redlands Boulevard, east of Anderson Street. This would be, hold on, Hometown Buffet, this would be the shopping center in the northeast corner, and then the Honda dealership. But this is the Antique Mall, this is the existing single-family home, and then the sword shop. And I've got some other photos on there as well. Again, there's three separate lots. We provide for you the dimension here on the slide. And in addition, as indicative of the photo, there's commercial to the north, to the west is the, the Mexican place, the gas station, there's a car wash and an oil loop shop approved there, and commercial to the east, and then residential along Court Street. Again, the Antique Mall, the front facing Redlands Boulevard, the backside, the single-family residence that's there, and then the sword shop as viewed from Redlands Boulevard. This would be the site plan. Coming in off, this would be at the north side, there would be two driveways. The perimeter around the site would be surrounded by a six-foot block wall, as indicated there. But before I get into the request for the general plan amendment, I need to give some background information on the floor area ratio. In the staff report, we've indicated that the site is approximately 104,000 square feet. But if we were to look at the site as at just 100,000 square feet, based on the general plan text that's been provided to you in the staff report, the floor area ratio is .5, so that limits the development potential for this site at 50,000 square feet. That limits the potential for a well-designed project. The request has come in for the general plan to be amendment, to be amended for the floor area ratio to .75, but, but would be limited just to hospitality-type uses. With that in mind, that would allow approximately 78,000 square feet, but with the total square footage, it's 73,000 square feet. So, there's some room to work with, but just some background information. And again, the request would be for the demolition of the existing three buildings on the site. This project went before the Historic Commission over the summer. The proposal is for a four-story, 111-room hotel. We provided colored renderings for you in your staff report, and then I will follow up on its, on some of the subsequent slides. There is an onsite restaurant that's proposed. The minimum requirement for that restaurant is 2,000 square feet. The reason for the conditional use permit is for the beer and wine service for the restaurant. That is allowed under the specific plan. There was an ordinance amending the specific plan 20 years ago. The project will provide 120 parking spaces. This is the first floor plan. When we took the item before Planning Commission last month, one of the conditions that was requested by the commission was the removal of the bar shown on the floor plan. Now, there are tables shown inside the dining, the restaurant. This would be the front and rear elevations of the project, incorporating stone veneer, some lattice treatments, a pitched roof. And then this would be visible from the rear. On the backside of the hotel would be a pool and spa. I'll show that to you on the landscape plan. This would be the side elevations, but this would be if you were on the east property line looking to the west, and then this would be if you were on the west property line looking to the east. This is the landscape plan. Couple other recommendations from the Planning Commission last month were the following, to add walkways and incorporate distinctive hardscape. This has been shown on the revised plan. In addition, this would be the main walkway coming in off of Redlands Boulevard, and this would incorporate improved hardscape as well. But last week, we took the plans back to Planning Commission, and we did get an additional recommendation from Commissioner Rojas to widen this particular walkway to eight feet in width. And the landscaping shown here and here, his recommendation is this be incorporated right in here. Commissioner Lealoja last month asked for orange trees, that's been incorporated. And then we also have another comment for some signage to be incorporated next to the walkways. And there is a note shown down here that the applicant would address that. That's been incorporated into the conditions of approval as well. And again, in summary, the request, the general plan amendment is for a floor area ratio increase and limited just to hospitality development. The project complies with the general plan and Measure V, it meets code requirements. As stated, it went before the Planning Commission last month, the additional conditions. In addition to the project before us this evening, there's the summary of the development impact fees, the application fees, plan check fees, and the future transit occupancy tax that this project would provide if approved this evening. Staff is available for comment, as is the applicant and his representative.
If council has any questions for staff or the applicant, would ask initially for that now, and then will also obviously be opportunity for further discussion after our public hearing. Any questions for staff at the moment?
Yeah, I have a question about those, about those walkways from the entrance to the street. Redlands Boulevard there is a through street, and is there any, I would think people would drive onto the property under the covered structure to let people off. Why would someone stop right on Redlands Boulevard and let someone off to walk across the sidewalk up to that hotel?
Correct. I believe, my recollection of the meeting last month was, it was more for the benefit of once the guests of the hotel check in, stay there, and if they see that there's the Hometown Buffet across the way, there's a walkway from the Port Coucher to Redlands Boulevard, not the other way around.
And therefore, opening an opportunity to jaywalk.
That is, yes. Ergo, the condition for the signs asking that pedestrians use the nearest crosswalk at the intersection of Redlands and Anderson. And that is shown in italics and in bold for the recommendation of the City Council.
I have a question regarding the floor area ratio.
Sure.
In this particular area, we're asking it to be increased from .5 to .75. If we agree to that, does it require general plan amendment, or could we just make it a mitigated negative declaration?
It is a, a change to the general plan, and as proposed, it would only apply to hospitality uses. It could be further reduced to hotels, or further reduced to require a conditional use permit, so that each one would be considered on a case-by-case basis, maybe a little bit more carefully than just through a precise plan of design. There's probably a number of ways. I, I know that you are concerned about opening it up throughout the city. We tried to limit it by declaring it only for hospitality uses, but you could further reduce it down to hotels, or hotels, motels, that type of thing.
My concern is I don't want in any way to prevent this project from moving forward. I think it's a good project, and I think it's something the city definitely needs. My concern is, as we move forward with other projects, and there might be, you know, restaurants next to each other, hotels next to each other, that if we increase the floor area ratio too high, all we're gonna end up doing is cramming ourselves in. And I think it's good to have space. Having said that, one of the things I'm recommending, and I'm actually opening up for the council to see what they believe, what they think is appropriate, is that rather than changing it for everything from now on, we're only changing it for this specific project, and then everyone along the way is subject to doing a general plan amendment. So, we don't necessarily have to, rather than going from a higher to a lower, which is something that is a possibility, where we're adopting .75 in each individual project, then is subject to going back to .5, I'd rather just make an exception for this particular project and then take it case-by-case basis. And I'm curious to see what other council members feel or the staff.
I suppose it's possible to adopt a hospitality designation just for this site, and if others wanted it, they would have to apply for it as well.
But I'm not referring to hospitality site, I'm referring to the, the floor area ratio.
If I could, the, the concept would be you would create a new land use category, that would be a hospitality category. It would have a floor area ratio of .75. The only place on your general plan that that category would now occur would be this site. That would then require anybody else wanting that designation and that floor area ratio to amend the land use map to get that designation.
Just to make sure I'm clear on this. So, they're asking, why would they be asking for it to be amended? Because they're already under the category of hospitality. So, right now, if we amend this, we'd give everyone .75?
No.
Automatically? No?
No. And, and the reason for that would be, right now, the, the request, as I understand, would be to change the commercial category to allow the hospitality use at .75. We would then, what we'd suggest is having a totally separate category that would be for hospitality, would be .75. And the only place right now that you would in this amendment apply that category would be this one and only site. So, anybody else who ever wanted to avail themselves of that floor area ratio, .75 for a hotel, would be required to change the land use map.
Okay, but they would only avail themselves of it if they want to go down, and most people want to go up. And I want them to having, to avail themselves of having it to go up.
Right. Because all the commercial throughout the rest of the city, every other site designated commercial would stay at .5.
No, I-
So, they could go up, yes.
True, but we're still changing it to .75, and they would only appeal if they wanted to go down. And I doubt anybody's gonna want to go down. Everybody's gonna want to go up.
This might be an opportunity to let staff, you know, look at that concern. I think it is a valid one, and I might open the public hearing and get comments, and then we'll return to, you know, possible suggested language and so forth on that. Thanks for the report. This is a public hearing. As stated, I will officially open the public hearing. I have so far one name, Eric Munoz, representing the property owner.
representing Shantu Patel, property owner of the subject site. Very happy to be here after the processing of this permit. And I mainly just want to show our concurrence with the staff report you've already received and highlight some of the responses that we've made, given the Planning Commission action of December 3rd. I think what I'll do is just go to the landscape plan here. Well, I'll go to the floor plan. One of the primary changes that we made, as Roel also mentioned, is the elimination in this area of the standalone bar area. This restaurant right here is designed so that it is internally embedded within the floor plan of the building. There is no external access. Oh, there you go. Okay. So, anyway, yes, very happy to be here. And we just have some bullet points summarizing the project. Roel already went through these. Here's our elevation, our front and back. I do want to point out that we did have about three or four reiterations of this architecture working with staff. There are some very good comments to make this prototype architectural design be site-specific and also appropriate for the Loma Linda community. So, we appreciate being able to work through the back and forth we had to get to this point. Again, these are the side elevations. Like I was saying before, the bar has been eliminated. This restaurant is internally embedded within the floor plan. There is only internal access to the restaurant, there is not external access to the restaurant. This is the pool area outside. We also have a meeting space in here. This was a fundamental part of the project. We actually kind of stopped our processing midstream in redesigning this project to facilitate the city desires and the business community objective of getting a conference and meeting space facility onto the site. And, and we're happy to now provide that consistent with the holiday-in criteria. Here, we just have second floor. These are the balance of the units, just to show the floor plan, how it's laid out. The site plan, all I want to point out here quickly is the loading area is off to the west elevation. This vacant site right here is a car wash site that's approved by the city. So, we do not have loading adjacent to the residential area, which is to the south, six-foot perimeter wall surrounding the site. And using the landscape plan, just to highlight a few more points real quick, we did just about double the landscaping in the back as far as the trees and the shrubs. This plan shows the pedestrian connections to the frontage sidewalk of the project, consistent with past, past Planning Commission action. We are in total acceptance and agreement and can support the conditions that require these pedestrian walkways. If you would like the dimensions that Roel summarized, we would be happy to take those as well. The dwarf orange pom, or the dwarf oranges have been located around the pool, as well as augmenting the pedestrian walkway and the, the landscaping on either side. as well as augmenting the pedestrian walkway and the landscaping on either side of them. We are also in agreement, if the council so chooses, to accept the condition for the warning signs to prevent the jaywalking scenario. As far as bringing the users to the sidewalk and the frontage of the property, you know, that's fine. If you would like the warning signs as a condition, we are fine with those as well. We also have a condition through the environmental review that the lighting in the landscaped parking lot area be subject to a survey and a study for illumination. And the fixtures themselves have to prevent off-site illumination, so all the light is shining on the property. And that's pretty much it. We also want to thank and note the review by the Historic Preservation Commission, given the onsite structures. We're happy to get their support for the project, and there is a condition that we will memorialize the site in our lobby. And finally, we just want to thank the city staff that has helped us through this project, and not only the public, the Historic Preservation Commission, but also the Chamber of Commerce for showing the support. Thank you very much. We can answer any questions.
Just to be crystal clear, again, the recommendations that the planning commission have, and the staff has in the report, and the conditions that were discussed by the council so far in the discussion are all accepted by the property owner. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Councilman Peters?
A little concerned about losing the largest Japanese sword shop west of the Mississippi River. Kind of a nice point in Loma Linda, which I hate to kind of lose, but, you know, it's progress. Maybe display your swords in the lobby.
I join in mourning the loss of the sword shop. However, I understand you're still gonna keep the sword shop going somewhere. So we're not gonna lose the business itself. That'll remain in town and hopefully generate some sales tax. But I think the idea of the hotel, I think, is a good concept. So I definitely would support it. One of the questions when we get into the area that council member Pesky raised is, to the extent, if the rest of you concur, if we can keep whatever policies we make consistent, so anybody else applying for a similar, and I see you nodding your head in agreement, Obi, probably we'd want to have the standards, so anybody applying for a similar situation would not feel like it was very, very subjective, that they had to ask for a favor from the council to avail themselves of that law. There would be at least a clear path of how you'd be eligible for that. We may want to make it very restrictive, but we may want to at least let people know that this isn't the only time we're ever going to allow this in town. Otherwise, it becomes almost so unique that no one else could ever build a hotel.
Well, I would agree with you. What I'm concerned about is a slippery slope, and I think the reason we're finding ourselves in this situation, where we wanted to do a general plan amendment, is because obviously there's not enough land. If they had more land, I would imagine this wouldn't be an issue. Obviously, as we develop throughout the city, not everybody's gonna be able to acquire each piece of land. So there's always gonna be an effort to try to increase the footprint. At some point, that may become an issue. My suggestion, once again, is just to have, in this particular issue, issue a variance. Allow that to happen, but not actually change the whole general plan and maintain the policy as it is. But that is my recommendation.
We will let staff continue to work on that language, and give you a few more minutes to give us some guidance on that. Any other questions for our property owner representative? If not, thank you. And last, I'm sorry, just did get one additional card, Patrick Su. And please come to the podium. You can choose to give your address by microphone, or we have it on record, either way that you're comfortable with.
Sure. Yeah, name is Patrick Su. The piano sharp, sharp, pure sharp, I own the building. And so I'll be the neighbor to this new Holiday Inn hotel. You look at the Redlands Boulevard within city limit, you can see our development is much, much less compared with a joint city that would be Redlands, or in any part. You look at that Redlands Boulevard, important Redlands Boulevard through the city. Last month, that was December, December 5th, I was in the city of Riverside. Due to this floor area ratio, and I was in planning department, I said, really? What is your policy as far as FAR? I have one copy here. This is business and manufacturer park. And their ratio is 1.5. I said, wow, we are so conservative. Our current policy is .5, only one-third. For anyone to run a business, I believe they really would like to have business developed or established in Loma Linda. But if the cost to them is so prohibited, definitely they won't shy away. You look at, there can be a three space compared with one right now, what we have. And so really, we need to concern, how can we increase the environment to attract the business? I think that's crucial. And even though with .75, this is unusual to the city history. But you look at, right now, Holiday Inn is only .73. They're not reached .75 yet. I think it's really worthwhile for this very restricted strip out of Redland Boulevard, make it a little bit higher. We are not talking about it widespread throughout our whole city, I believe, whole city limit. But for the Redlands Boulevard, it's worthwhile to consider, really make FAR the higher or reasonable as possible. That's my very first concern. Second one is parking availability, okay? FAR, I did one research, the city of Riverside. But as far as parking, I did extensive from city of Monero Valley, Redland, Samaritano, Riverside, even Fontana. You compare all of them, then we are roughly about 20 to 30 percent less than our city's requirement. I think it's really need worthwhile to look at that. This is very first major hospitality business. Not only that, based on the number of medical profession, definitely there'd be a need for sufficient room, but at the same time, would we need sufficient parking spaces? I think it's really worthwhile. I discussed that with Rauw numerous. It could be about three months. At the very beginning, about three months ago, is we are roughly about 35 spaces short. But at this moment, we still in 120. And so really, that is critical. We have 2,000 square foot of restaurant, plus about two or three conference room. They will be fully used all the time, based on my experience, because we use a lot of city, like that be Hilton and Samaritano hospitality land. I think this worthwhile to concern. Otherwise, I'm the one running the business right next to him. Not only me, but any other people. For example, like the buffet across street, their parking space will be impacted due to limited space available from this current facility proposal.
Thank you. Would staff care to respond on the parking issue? I understood favorable for some of the changes related to the floor surface area. But the parking issue, could you give us some feedback?
Sure, no problem. And I'll direct my comments just to that. The project is being designed to the parking standards from the Loma Linda municipal code. And we did provide, I believe, the breakdown of that in the planning commission staff report. But based on 111 rooms and the section from the zoning code, the minimum required for that would be 117 spaces. They are providing a total of 120. That does take into account the room count, the meeting space, and then for the restaurant space as well.
To specifically address the concern, I believe, heard Mr. Su state that most other cities seem to have a little different ratio that he's concerned about. Is that true, that our standards seem to be significantly different from all those other cities?
Well, based, technically, the project site is in the specific plan, but as part of the ongoing discussion with the general plan, eventually the specific plan will be repealed. In the staff report, we did indicate that some of the standards provide, some of the standards stipulated for hospitality-type use is a little bit onerous, taking into account the size of the lots and the fact that there's only three lots. Originally, or had they stuck to those standards from the specific plan, that would have required, I believe, 250-some parking spaces. The project site is only 2.4 acres.
But again, feedback, planning commission, and so forth, we do have recommendations based on those numbers and so forth.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, one of the concerns that we had is that the, the Redlands, the specific plan area was developed back in the late 80s, and it has some standards that are frankly developed for an older time, let's say. And they, if you look around at some of the hotels that have been built with those standards, three-quarters of the day, they sit vacant. They are under, I mean, they're just well overparked. And I don't think that's gonna be the case here. The applicant and his traffic engineer supplied us with information on other sites that they have developed for the same hotel chain that use this parking ratio, which is actually pretty much our parking ratio in the city's municipal code. So we're pretty comfortable with it.
Thank you. Any other comments from public? That's the last of the slips. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask council for discussion, and eventually action based on that.
Just had a quick question for the applicant. If we approve this, how quickly do we get to the next stage of actually starting this project? Do you happen to know?
Thank you for that question. About one year from now to get construction documents approved, and then about another one year to do the construction.
Just a comment on the parking. I'd probably take a slightly different view than other people would on that issue. And that is trying to look down the road, you know, a number of years. And that is, without question, we will be going away from individuals driving in cars as we get 10 or 20 or 30 years down the road. And I would expect that we would probably need less and less parking, to have more and more parking, number one. Number two, it's close to the university, where a lot of the business there, in terms of the conference rooms and so on, may be part of, or somehow related to the university, and a lot of people would be going down there, you know, carpooling. And thirdly, I think that's what we need to be encouraging, is people carpooling, getting their other ways than in their individual autos. That's the way we're simply gonna have to move in this society. It's gonna take a long, hard go, but that's what we're gonna have to do.
I guess one question. Is the owner, operator of the hotel, planning to have any sort of shuttle that would access the campus, or anything like that? I don't know if they've planned that far ahead.
I'll let the applicant's representative answer that question.
Yes, there will be shuttle van provided with the hotel for that very purpose. And the property owner actually has a portfolio of hotels in Southern California, and has done the shuttle van successfully in those locations as well. Thanks.
Just one quick question I have. As we all know, this property will be very typical, where owner builds or owns a property, a motel hotel chain licenses. It's intended as Holiday Inn. It's indicated. What assurance, and is there any time period that that would be in effect? Or could the branding change virtually any time?
Based on the information that they've given us, you know, we brought that forward as a Holiday Inn. Originally, it was a Holiday Inn Express. That's part of their lower tier. Midway through the project, they changed and came aboard with the Holiday Inn brand. As far as the guarantee, I'd have to defer that to the applicant to get some confirmation that they're assured to stay with the project.
But there's nothing specifically in our conditional use permit, or anything else that would say it has to be brand X or brand Y?
No, the conditional use permit is actually for the alcohol, but the approval entitlement for the hotel itself, that's a vehicle that we were able to bring forward for both of them, because of the request for alcohol. But the hotel is basically approved for a hotel, not a specific brand, although we're very happy that that is the brand that goes with it. If at some point in the future, they want to sell that hotel, another brand could come in at this point. And I, other than if the city attorney have any ideas on that, I don't know that that could be precluded.
Applicant wished to address that. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. There is a franchise agreement that is already signed between Holiday Inn and the property owner, and it will be in effect for 10 years, from the date of opening forward to 10 years, and it is renewable. So that's the initial term, and it is already signed pending approval tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, or is council ready for action?
In regards to the franchise agreement, has the city seen a copy of that?
No, but they certainly can. We'd be very happy to share a copy of that. And if you want a condition to that effect, that's no problem at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We have been looking at various options to the general plan amendment text. But I think at this point, I guess we should find out what the council would like in terms of, do you want to consider different language, or do you want to take the motion as proposed? We could throw the options out for you, I suppose.
Is there a consensus from the council that we ask staff to give us some of the options to look at the floor space issue, to keep it as restrictive as possible for this specific application? Would we like a report on language that might accomplish that, or do we have a consensus? Maybe we could just do it by consensus to go along the lines that I believe council member Pesky and Ziprick indicated?
I'd make sure I'm clear. I'm in favor of increasing the floor area ratio. My only concern is that I do not, at this point, want to apply it across the board to all hospitality uses in the future, but only to this specific project. In doing so, I guess my question is, if we're gonna go in that direction, are we able to do that? Or do we need further clarification as to why we're doing it, for the specifics project only?
Well, unfortunately, applying a general plan amendment to just this site is problematic in that it could constitute a spot zoning. I'll leave that question to the city attorney. The other idea for a land use variance, variances are actually applied to properties that have unique characteristics, usually dimensional, but you cannot apply a variance to a land use. So we're, I'm a little bit concerned about that. But that's another question for the city attorney. We do have some potential alternatives that we could consider. You could apply it only to hotels and motels, eliminate it from the broad category of hospitality uses. Or I think our general plan consultant, as it is a general plan issue, I asked him to, if he had some ideas on this, and he does. Did you want to address that? Now, any changes that we make to the proposal, we would, I'll check with our city clerk on this, but we would have to go, we renotice the general plan amendment. clerk on this, but we would have to go, we renotice the, the general plan amendment, and we could not approve the project until we come back with a new resolution. So it would be at least a ten-day notice, so it might not, it would probably have to be a meeting in February. Is that correct, Pam? If we were to renotice.
It's the best way to accomplish it.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think if, if you want to limit it in some way, we'll have to retool the resolution. And if we do that, then we've changed the context of the general plan amendment, and we need to renotice it and have it, basically bring it back for another public hearing, or continue it for a public hearing.
Personally, just from hearing from what you just described, I'm in favor of only applying it to hotels. That's something that I would, I think that's acceptable. I think the chances of having hotel after hotel after hotel next to each other is pretty slim.
Redlands.
Yeah. Having said that, I know that it might delay the project or the approval by possibly another month, but I think this is a very important amendment that I think does apply to the rest of the city. It just so happens to be attached to your project, so I apologize if that ends up happening, depending on what the council decides to vote here, but I would be in favor of that.
You know, what, what I'm wondering is, we're going to cause a certain amount of grief if we cause a delay on this. What if we were to go ahead and approve it right now as proposed? Let it move forward and, and ask staff to go ahead and look at the issue. I don't think we're going to have, you know, ten hotels in this economy get proposed all at once, and we probably have time at leisure to consider, you know, the very policy issues we're, we're talking about. What if we were to go ahead and let these folks get on the way? Because you know how, you can see how long this is going to take to, to move forward. They've been in concept on this for months, and they're going to be two years as it is to get going. What if we were to go ahead and accept it, in other words, right now, and then ask staff to come back and look at the issue and discuss it with us further?
I think we will have to defer to our city attorney and staff and see what their answer may be to that question.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the very last question.
All I was suggesting is we move forward with what's proposed now, so it doesn't cause a great delay. I appreciate where my, my colleague is going. I get a lot of feedback. But if we could, if we could move forward with what is proposed now and then have staff and the city attorney look at the long-term issue, we could come back and do amendments over the next two or three months if we want to. Right now, we're going to tie them up. And time is money. I mean, there, there, there's nothing going to be pending, I don't think, on the horizon with the current economy that's going to be falling right on the heels of this. It's just a hunch.
Mr. Mayor, I do have another suggestion. You could approve the resolution as proposed tonight, and we could make the changes you want in the general plan.
That sounds reasonable to me.
That was going to be my suggestion.
That's perfect. Let's do that.
But I would comment that I had just been looking at the language of the resolution, and you could certainly limit this increased floor area ratio to hotels on Redlands Boulevard, and you could require a conditional use permit so that it would receive appropriate review and consideration of, of the surrounding circumstances. So that would be my recommendation, that staff look at those additional requirements and implement those in a future review of the general plan.
So we could approve this and move parallel with that.
Yes.
That's fine.
That sounds good.
If everyone is reasonably comfortable with that, I think we're to the point where we can take some action if counsel so chooses.
I move we adopt the mitigated negative declaration. Do we have to do these all separately, the separate motions?
I think you always like that, don't you?
Okay.
Let's make our city attorney happy, so we'll just take that.
Number one.
The seconded.
Be further discussion on the negative declaration. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the next.
Number two, I approve, I move we approve the general plan amendment number zero-seven-dash-oh-two and adopt the resolution, council bill R. two thousand nine dash zero-one, based on the findings attachment to.
Second.
I thought we were going to put that in the general plan, though.
What's the best way to phrase this, Mr. City Attorney? Should we add that now or indicate we're going to with the general plan?
I don't think you need to make that part of this motion. It can simply be part of the direction to staff to implement that change in the future amendments to the general plan that you'll be considering.
Okay, I understand. That's fine.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. I move appropriate certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of the three structures, based on the findings, including the sword shop.
Second.
No offense, Mr. Christensen, but I do think it will be a positive addition to have the hotel, and we'll have to keep looking for a space for you. Anyway, we've been moved and seconded. All in favor of the certificate of appropriateness for demolition? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And then the last item?
I move the, approve the conditional use permit number zero-eight-dash-oh-two, based on the findings, and subject to the attached conditions of approval, including recycling the paint cans. Empty paint cans. I'm glad that's in the row.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anything, Mr. City Attorney, need to do different on this last one? Are you comfortable with that language? Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It looks like it carries, you know, no project is perfect, but I think this will be a real plus potentially for the community, and look forward to you making the best possible project, which I trust you will, and thank you very much.
Good luck.
Watch the jaywalking.
Item number four, our draft general plan. This probably will not be a five-minute item, I would guess, and we'll take bets to that effect if anyone cares too, although maybe that's illegal, I shouldn't say that. Why don't we take a very brief break? I'm going to try and hold everyone to, let's reconvene in, in no more than ten minutes, and a ten-minute break, be back at eight-fifty, and then we'll try and get through this next item uninterrupted.
We'll have to second.[1062.75]
If we could make our way back and reconvene, please. Don't mean to interrupt, but if we could make our way back and reconvene the meeting. Councilman Peterson, Councilmember Zuprick, you are being called. All right, would like to reconvene our city council meeting after a brief break. The next item as listed on our agenda is our draft general plan. This is obviously a rather large item in both concept and in details and so forth. I think just to illustrate some of the complexity and so forth, besides all the binders that we've gotten on the general plan, got another stack of additional materials in the last few days. So it's, I doubt any of us can say we've read every single word, but I know are all trying our best to get the information here. There, you know, to get things a little backwards, I am going to skip to just at least one part of the recommendation from staff that on this item tonight that we do hear, staff status report presentation, obviously it is listed as a public hearing, take input. I, at this point, don't conceive of doing anything differently than that recommendation. Obviously council has that prerogative if they choose to do differently, but my intent so far is based on staff's recommendation to do that status report, take input from public and council as far as things that need to be clarified, changed, worked on, et cetera. So that's as a very brief opening background, how I would see this item as it stands before us tonight. So would like to start with community development and consultants giving us introduction on this item as briefly as you think can be done, which I know is pretty, pretty difficult to do.
Mr. Mayor and council, I apologize that you were handed a stack of things tonight. Given our request for the opportunity to give you a status report and take public testimony and, and continue, I guess these items are things for you to study in the future. However, I want to give you just a little bit more background. The general plan was reviewed by the planning commission on December 17th. And at that time, the commission gave us a number of recommendations that are outlined in attachment A. And we had put together a draft general plan that is tagged as general plan, January 2009. And we attempted to follow the commission's recommendations, but we reported back to them in a non-public hearing on December, on January 7th and found that they had many concerns and some frustrations that they felt that we had not taken their recommendations to heart and implemented them into the draft general plan. We were very concerned about that, and so we have been trying to study the issues and see how we could further implement them. We had already gotten a vote from them to forward it to city council. And so what we would like to do, as I mentioned, is further study their concerns and their recommendations. Some of the recommendations include further reducing multifamily and high residential designations and adding more commercial. And there I think are some special, some special needs that we, we should look at for special planning area D. And with, with that in mind, we would like further, to further study the issues. We have received some correspondence. In your staff report, we have included two letters at the back. One of those letters is from the Morongo Band of Mission Indians, basically thanking us for allowing them to review the general plan. And they have following, they had included comments for how to handle human remains and other cultural resources that are discovered during project development, construction. We actually already implement those requirements in our projects, so it's good to know that we're on track with them. But we need to let you know that they did submit a letter as part of the general plan. We also received a letter from Mr. Robert Stewart, and I know that you received separate copies of that, but his letter is also included in the staff report. And Mr. Stewart is concerned about the potential of changing the designation that we've included in the January 2009 version of the general plan for the property located south and adjacent to the civic center. And we had included that as senior citizen residential designation. That allows for up to 25 dwelling units per acre. The planning commission had indicated to us that they were okay with senior housing on that property. We used the only senior designation that we have, which is 25, and, and apparently that is a major concern, that it's too high density. Mr. Stewart has written a letter requesting that that designation stay in place, and he has included some arguments in, on his behalf for that designation. We've also received today, late in the afternoon, a letter from the company Mapco for their property located on the south side of Scotch Lane, just off of Reggie Canyon Road. And they have some special requests that we haven't really had a chance to study. It's 66 acres, and I think they would like to have a designation of special planning area. And we'll hopefully get input from the council on that, once you've had time to absorb that letter and we've had time to study the issues relative to it. There is also a letter from Lewis Investment Corporation that I think you received separate copies of. That came in, I think, a day or two ago, and they are concerned about the changes that we'll describe to you later of our treatment of special planning area A, I mean, special planning area D with the concept plan and reducing the densities in that area and increasing commercial. With those comments, then I will turn it over to Lloyd Sola to present a slide presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, you did receive other handouts that are forms and letters from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and that is to provide you with some background on the process for processing and obtaining approval for a certified housing element from the state. And I don't expect you to, to absorb all that information this evening.
And you will keep, keep that one going.
Okay, and, and what I will do, as, as the mayor requested, to reduce the length of time that the presentation will take, is I'll focus on really the two elements of the general plan where the primary issues are, which are land use and, and housing. Where we started this update program or, or this amendment was a very limited charge that we had from city council, which was, one, physically take the provisions of measure V, put them into the general plan document, and then make that document, the general plan internally consistent. Essentially change those provisions of the general plan that would be inconsistent with, with measure V. Examples would be the way designations were called out in the land use element, six to 12, and, and under measure V at zero up to, and so those kinds of revisions were made, and a series of other ones. And then concurrent with, with that was an update of the housing element for the period up through the year 2014. As we got public comments and, and the planning commission took their review in December, we're looking at a number of different things in this program that are part of the document that you have. And as you will see, and as we talk about this, a request on the part of the commission, I think members of the public, to take particularly those land use amendments farther than, than we had taken them before. The charge that we were given in, in December at the planning commission was to reduce the residential buildout within the city as much as was feasible, and really there were two benchmarks we were given at, at that time. One was not to exceed the SCAG 2030 projections. And as you will see, those 2030 projections don't really limit much of anything. And I think that's where part of the issues come from in terms of the buildout now. And second, make sure that we still can meet housing element objectives. In doing that, we would then increase, reduce density overall, increase the buildout of commercial and employment generating lands, business park lands, to simply eliminate some land designated for residential, making it commercial or business park, increase recreational open space, support introduction of metro link service. So those were the, in real summary, the charges that we got at, at the commission. And what I'll do now is just quickly run through some of the other elements, and as I get to land use and housing, we'll spend some time there. There are some amendments in front of you in the introduction chapter. Basically, all those do is point to what are the provisions of measure V and how are they introduced in this plan? One thing that will be very different in this general plan than previous ones is the provisions of measure V will be in italicized print. The reason for that is those provisions of measure V cannot be changed except by vote of the people. Whereas the general plan provisions that are not adopted by vote of the people can be changed up to four times a year. And it's very important to distinguish that which council can change in its normal cycles of general plan review and that which cannot be changed except by vote of the people. And that's the purpose of italicized print and not italicized print. Now, as we get into the land use element, there were changes made to the land use map that are, is in front of you and that the commission reviewed in, in their report in January. And here is where the issue starts. When we look at the most current SCAG 2030 projections, for the year 2030, SCAG projects more dwelling units and more households than the general plan as it was adopted back in 2006 permitted. So even under, under the, if we never made a change related to, to measure V, if we never changed the land use element, you know, beyond the action council took in 2006, SCAG would project you are going to keep growing past the time your existing general plan builds out. Past 2030, SCAG projections are now going to 2035, show continued growth. So that benchmark of using SCAG 2030 projections is clearly not consistent with the charge given by, by the commission, even though we used at that time the 2030 projections. So the next map shows, this shows the general plan land use as it was adopted in, in 2006. And then if we go to the next one, that will show changes that are proposed as part of this. One, the very large one you see at the south end is the preservation area that was adopted by the city as part of a land purchase, and the other amendments that are proposed, both to meet housing element and as part of, of what we started to do with the, the commission's charge to us back in December. Yeah, let me go to the next one. And as Deborah mentioned, there are changes proposed to special planning area D, doing two things, primarily two things. One is to eliminate that commercial mixed use category that was both commercial and allowed residential and multifamily on second floors, increase the amount of commercial from about 70 acres to 95 acres, and then change the, the land use mix, more single family at low density, because that was not really part of those two specific plans, eliminate the densities in the middle range, the small lot, single families, the, the low density condos, reduce even some of the high density, and overall reducing the buildout of, of the general plan within special planning area D from about 2,496 units down to 1,163. There are a number of other little amendments going on in, in the land use element. As I mentioned earlier, modifying land use designations to be consistent with measure V, to add new land use designations, hillside conservation, low density hillside, medium density rural estates, very low density, the very high density as it was adopted in measure V, the senior housing category as adopted in measure V, getting all of that into the land use element. Modifying the South Hills designation as it was applied to areas exempted from measure V, so basically the western portion of the South Hills that was exempted from measure V, to eliminate all of those density bonuses that were applying under the, the general plan as adopted in 2006. One of the things that we noted also, and we were making this recommendation, is existing city parks are not always designated as park or open space, pick, so we're, we're proposing a parks designation to be applied to parks, and then deleting special planning areas H and I in exchange for standard land use designations for those areas. The next one, we're also, in terms of the housing element, this was discussed with, with the council long ago, looking at student and employee housing within the university and hospital campuses, and then also making sure that we had for each of the special planning areas, a buildout figure that said, this is how many housing units you may add. The circulation element amendments are pretty straightforward. Adding supporting metro link service, updating the, the improvements recommended as part of pursuant to a traffic study that was, that was done in support of the environmental for the general plan. And the key finding of that traffic study is that implementation of measure V is feasible from a traffic standpoint. That was part of some of the, the issues we, that, that the city was facing in litigation regarding the housing element. We have demonstrated, we believe, that measure V can in fact be implemented. We've modified some of the roadway performance standards to better track measure V, so we now have performance standards that deal both with, under measure V as it was adopted, existing plus project, as well as making sure that we're mitigating for cumulative traffic 20 years in the future. And we, we track measure V there, adopting, changing that long-term standard as it was before from level of service D to level of service C, and then providing tracking of, of measure V where achieving level of service C is not feasible. In previous council workshops, there's been a great deal of discussion regarding the concurrency policies of, of measure V and the general plan and how they would be implemented. And special counsel had, I think, put forward the interpretation of measure V, and I'll actually do the right-hand column first, that fair share improvements under measure V can be provided and meet the requirements of measure V either with physical improvements or payment of a fee. But under measure V, with its wording about not allowing level of service to deteriorate, special counsel had the interpretation that where improvements where there is a fee being involved, that the actual construction of improvements needs to be begun prior to the impact that requires mitigation. And that was how special counsel defined concurrency in that existing plus project case. The general plan amendment before you and the discussion we had as part of that long-term, 20-year general plan outlook is, again, fair share improvements could be provided either with physical improvements, you know, the mitigation, either with physical improvements or payment of fee, but that under the general plan, we would say that if a public entity is going to build those improvements, and it is in a capital improvement program, if an interchange is part of a capital improvement program, if an intersection improvement is part of the city's capital improvement program and is programmed sometime, that you can point to it and say, we can demonstrate those funds will be spent. That would be mitigation for the general plan. So there are those two pieces out there. Now let's get to the housing element. The basic revisions would be in, in relation to the, the HCD comments that we have on the previous housing element and, and things that we know they're going to want. We have provided additional information on city development standards, updated the inventory of housing that's available to meet needs of all economic segments based on a parcel-by-parcel review, and looking at through the year 2014, a reduction in the buildout of those vacant lands by a little bit less than 1,000 units. The next slide will show the quantified objectives. This is what the housing element must accomplish, so that we, in terms of extremely low, very low income, low income, moderate, and above moderate income, through, from 2006 through 2014, our obligation as a community is not to build 2,646 units, but to make sure that our general plan and zoning provide for that much development. And that is what would be required under the law, not building it, because in this market, I don't think anybody's going to guarantee what's going to get built, but we need at this point to make sure that it can be built, and we aren't saying, no, we aren't even going to provide the inventory. So if we go to the next slide, the analysis of what land do we have as of today, sitting in, in front of the city council in the general plan that is sitting in front of you, with all the amendments proposed. And here's where you'll see, I think, some of the concern that, that the planning commission and members of the public had. As we look at the inventory of vacant lands, it would provide for somewhat more land for extremely low income, very low income, and low income housing than would be required to meet the housing element objectives through the year 2014. to meet the housing element objectives through the year 2014. And generally, those lands relate to properties that would be designated for either senior housing or very-high-density. As adopted by Measure V, the very-high-density category, up to 20 units per acre, the senior housing, up to 25 units per acre. And the key of that 20 unit per acre is, in terms of land inventory and the adequacy of our zoning for very-low, extremely-low, low-income, 20 units per acre is a little bit of a magic number. Under the law, we can now presume that a general plan designation that allows for up to 20 units per acre provides land for those very-low-income categories. Land at a max of 18 units per acre does not. So if what we want to do as a community is reduce the amount of potential future multifamily, what we have to work with are the very-high-density category, the senior housing category, reducing some of the build-out of that, or the very-high-density category, looking at some of the very-high-density that might be permitted within special planning area D, and the potential for university housing. So based on, I think, the discussion the commission had back when they got their report a week ago, if you want to cut back more multifamily, those would be the places to look to do it. And it would be pretty easy now to calculate, how much can you do and still meet those requirements through 2014? The second place to look at cutting back some of that density is the way the housing element has been constructed, going back to even the construction of the 2006 general plan, has been the inventory of housing, particularly on the senior, on the single-family side, has been to include both lands within the city as well as lands within the sphere. So one of the things that certainly could be done to reduce that surplus on the above-moderate side is simply to say, land outside the city will not be counted as part of our inventory under the housing element, and that will very quickly, even in low-density housing, eliminate a portion of that 600 surplus. So if that is the direction council wishes to go in response to some of the concerns that the commission had, even after the reductions that are in here, those would be the options that could be looked at.
Before you change that slide, your last row is missing. Can you just briefly cover that?
Yes, in the bottom row is the surplus. This is always fun. The projector doesn't catch all of what the computer will catch. What we did was look at, as you can see in each of the categories here, the total and remaining need. So the total is the build-out of all those vacant parcels, the remaining need, the objective yet to be met in the housing element. And just the basic math will say that we have 140, we have land for about 150, 149 extremely-low-income housing units, more than we need to meet our objective.
That would be here.
And that would be right, that's the number right there. We have land inventory to build out 149 more very-low-income units than is our housing element objective. We have 176 more, or land for 176 more low-income units than we would need to meet our housing element objective. In terms of moderate-income housing, we have, it's a difference of four, so we're right there. And in the above-moderate, we have about 600 more units available to be built. The land inventory would allow that to be built over and above the 2014 objective. Now, when we first did our analysis following the December commission hearing, at the staff and consultant level, we made a decision in our recommendation not to try and cut back the land inventory, the general plan land use map, to the 2014 level. And a couple of reasons that we did that, but I'll preface these reasons by saying, you as the council get to make the policy choices to how you want to construct your land use element, your housing element. The real limitation, I think, that we have here is making sure we meet the 2014, and so far, I don't think that has really been at issue. We left the land use where it was and as presented. One, because we didn't anticipate build-out of the general plan until 2020, so sometime after the housing element period, and the way that the land use would be constructed by cutting the multifamily back, you would meet the housing element through 2014. SCAG is projecting growth through 2030, 2035. You would have a period of time in 2014, so five years from now, this city council would be sitting in front of a mandatory, the next mandatory update of the housing element and facing this situation. If in fact, we built the affordable housing and meet our objectives through 2014, you would then have land inventory to build out single-family housing, no land inventory to build out for very-low-income, moderate-income, and those lower-income groups, and potentially you could have a serious issue. We took a quick look at preview of coming attractions of what that might look like in terms of your next set of objectives, utilizing SCAG's 2015 to 2020 projections. And these are what the numbers look like, but I think the other thing in making your policy decision, the general plan, as we are recommending that land use element right now, isn't going to get you through build-out to the SCAG projections in 2020, isn't going to meet the 2015 to 2020 projections as it is. So one of the things that, as you make a decision on this land use map, just please make it recognizing what's going to happen five years from now when you do this again. And as long as we make a conscious decision about where we're going and you're making a policy decision, I think the better way of constructing the general plan is rather than leaving a lot of single-family, if we want to cut back the multifamily, more than we have done already to meet just those 2014 projections, I think we would be better off showing build-out on the single-family side for just the city and not including the sphere, and things will be more balanced. We can go to the next one, and we'll run through some of the other things in the housing element, that there is a proposal and a program to eliminate or modify the requirements for second dwelling units in the city. Right now, you require conditional use permit for second dwelling units. And one of the things under state law and the laws regarding second dwelling units and some other types of housing is, they cannot be discretionary, they have to be by right. So we cannot use CUPs, but that does not eliminate your abilities as a city to say, okay, we will allow a second dwelling unit, but only under these circumstances, these are the rules. And so what we're proposing in the housing element is when you update your zoning, put those rules in there, eliminate the CUP requirements for both second dwelling units, multifamily development, residential care facilities, traditional housing, that way we're meeting the requirements, the standards are there, but not necessarily that discretionary action. The city's density bonus ordinance needs to be updated. And one of the other charges of the planning commission was to provide for distributing affordable housing, those lower-income groups, the lower-income housing, so we don't have it all in one location. There are already some programs that you have, or one big program that you have to do that, is your first-time homebuyer program. And as you give out first time, you know, you get lower-income residents into homes, even if that house was not built as an affordable dwelling unit, you can use that program to meet some of your need. It's very difficult to demonstrate in advance, we will do this many, but what we can do is, you can then use them at the end of the housing element, looking back, we did this much, we met that need, even if it wasn't building multifamily. The other suggestion was something that some cities have done as far as distributing, looking at some of your single-family areas and allowing within a standard single-family tract, essentially a duplex unit that would have, on a corner lot, fairly common in some cities, that you have a unit facing one street, a unit facing another street, so unless you happen to be perfectly diagonal seeing that, you can actually use some of those to meet the inclusionary requirements that your redevelopment agency has without simply taking fees. It's a way of requiring even a single-family developer to build some of his fair share of the lower-income units. As we get into the public services and facilities element, what we've done is incorporate performance standards for all the, your basic public services and facilities. The other key here was a comment that the planning commission had, which was, there is now a deficit in terms of your park ratio. If we want to maintain and achieve five acres per thousand population of park, we're short of that, we need to make up that deficit. The general plan, as now recommended pursuant to the commission's recommendations, acknowledges that deficit, says we need to make it up, and identifies the need for a 20 to 30-acre sports park specifically within special planning area D. In the public, the open space and conservation element, basically, we have implemented provisions from Measure V. One key here is incorporating into the open space and conservation element provisions to reduce the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. The state attorney general has been suing counties on their general plan, San Bernardino County got sued and came to agreement with the attorney general. Cities felt very comfortable because the attorney general was only suing counties, but now he started suing cities, as the city of Stockton found out. And so what we have done is incorporated a program to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, essentially calling for the very program that the county agreed with, tailored to the size of Loma Linda, but we know that the attorney general agreed to it with your county, it would be very difficult not to agree to that same program here. And then finally, in the implementation chapter, the climate action plan, which is the key of that settlement with the attorney general of the county had, and strengthening provisions, calling for a parks master plan, which would be your program to provide parks, identifying locations for those parks, as well as how will we go about making up the existing deficit. There is all of the general plan that's in front of you, the amendments that are in front of you, as well as kind of a summary, hopefully I caught the major issues and some ways of potentially responding to those issues raised with the document.
Thank you for that report. It's very difficult to distill it down, but I think you covered a lot of the highlights that are certainly elements of potential controversy and changes and so forth. This is a public hearing. We have the option to have council ask any questions of staff or consultants now or wait until a public hearing. My intent was to go ahead with the public hearing unless there's some things that we need clarified with our presentation before that. Seem to have a consensus from what I see, so I will proceed with opening the public hearing. Again, unless something happens different than we anticipate, don't anticipate taking action tonight, so would like the focus of comments and discussion to be on issues that need to be clarified, areas of disagreement with the directions that have been indicated tonight, and that way, staff and potentially planning commission and council can work to those directions. Hour is already getting late, sorry to belabor, but try and keep your comments if you can to three minutes. I'm not going to necessarily cut you off, but we'll try and give everybody a chance and go in that direction. So with that as a brief background, open the public hearing, and we'll take the cards I have as I receive them. The first one I have is for Ms. Lori Uberzak, and she indicated wears many hats from homeowner to planning commissioner to, I don't know, plans to speak in any other capacity for planning commission, but certainly those first two elements. So please present your areas of concern and comments for us.
Thank you. Again, my name's Lori Uberzak, and I'm privileged to be on the planning commission. Our concern, as Deborah had brought up, was that when we got the numbers back to us at the last meeting last week, they weren't exactly what we had anticipated that they were going to be, as what we had asked to be executed. So we had received the table, we had received the packet actually, with a number of the changes that we had recommended for us to review. There was a table included which summarized these, and the table is what brought us a lot of concern. In the high-density residential multifamily dwelling units, for example, the number was reduced from 3,693 to 898, but when we looked at the very-high-density residential multifamily dwelling units, we actually had seen an increase on this table from 402 units to 3,581. So we were quite concerned about that when we had asked to decrease the multifamily, high-density, and very-high-density dwelling units. We were looking at the SCAG projection numbers for that period of 2006 to 2014, realizing that we had to achieve the ability to provide for 2,646 homes, and the table we had gotten didn't even include special planning area D at the time. And the numbers had added up to 10,712. If we had put special planning area D in, 11,875, I was jotting these down during the meeting. So this was our concern. What we wanted to do was to be sure that we were able to meet the requirements of the state and fulfill our obligation to provide housing, the ability to provide housing for all segments of the economic strata, without overdeveloping the community and using up our entire land use inventory. We know we need to meet the numbers for 2014, we know there'll be projections for 2030 that we will have to accommodate after 2014, but we didn't want to use up all the land use inventory in the meantime, if we're designating them as high-density, very-high-density housing units, and somebody can come in and develop it that way. So that was our concern. We thought that was in the best interest of the city, and unfortunately, staff got pressured to try to throw this together very quickly, and we all realized that it didn't come out quite the way we planned. So I wanted to take this opportunity to come, not only as a private citizen, but as a planning commissioner, and state that, as Deborah had alluded to, that was one of the things that we were trying to work back in and reconsider, was to get the numbers more in line with keeping with the SCAG green of projections and not overly exceeding them.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You saw the presentation from Mr. Zola on the individual categories and what the excesses are over the requirements. Are those numbers, do those numbers comport with what you received in the table that you were shown? And does that, does his statement that if we wanted to reduce some of them, there's this amount that we could do, does that satisfy you, or is that the kind of a thing that you would want the planning commission to have further review of? Or what's your feeling about the presentation we just saw?
Well, those numbers were different than the ones we had. I'll give you a copy, or I'll give Mayor Brower a copy. This was what was in our habit that we received the other night. Now, as Deborah just said too, those numbers are going to change, and why she didn't provide you with a new table was because they really need to digest all that we discussed the other night and put that back into another table, and since they haven't executed that yet, it would seem like spinning your wheels to reproduce yet another table that wasn't settled. But those numbers were different than the ones we saw. These, I think you can see, are much further off from those numbers. But those numbers were very- But those numbers were very concerning, and that was as typed without special planning area D, which did have a large number of units in it, even though it had been reduced. We do have those numbers, too. As a matter of fact, I have what we had gotten there, too. I scanned this in. So this was reduced substantially, but you're still able to put 1,163 dwelling units in that, remembering that for the whole period, we need to provide an allocation of 2,646.
And my understanding from our general plan consultant is the tables that have been included for the planning commission packet were preliminary, and Deborah gave them the wrong tables. So...
So we panicked when we saw those numbers, but that is what we were presented.
And you were, yes.
Yeah. So we were concerned and wanted to make sure that that got back to us as a planning commission, because that was not, that wasn't what we meant to execute when we executed our amendments to, when we voted to kick it up to the council in December with the amendments that we wanted. That wasn't exactly what we had planned to execute.
Well, it seems like we've got a couple of issues, specific figures and tables that you've elucidated very nicely, and then we've had the introduction of the idea of taking some of the sphere of influence numbers out, and so I think unquestionably, we have some, you know, major analysis to make sure, if we choose to go in that direction, to get all those numbers meshed and make sure we all understand that. And I think it's important, this is the kind of thing, hoping to bring out tonight some of these issues, so we can work those through and clarify. It's a daunting task. We're going to have some errors that are going to happen, and that's much appreciated to bring that to our attention, and we'll certainly work through and get those numbers appropriate. Any other comments, questions for Commissioner?
I was just wondering, we always hear about the difference between RENA, SCAG, and HCD. Is there, is HCD, in general, happy with cities that achieve the RENA goals for the 2014? Or is HCD some boogeyman that's going to come down and want more? Or how do we know? How do we deal with that?
Let me kind of lay out the process. And the way the numbers come about and the relationship between HCD and the state agencies and SCAG is, for each housing element period, the first thing that happens is the Department of Finance determines by region. So for all of Southern California, how much growth over the next housing element period? That number is given to SCAG. So the state decides, through 2014, Southern California is going to grow by this many households. SCAG then is charged with taking that many households and distributing that number to individual jurisdictions, to the city of Loma Linda, city of Radlin, city of Colton, San Bernardino County, for unincorporated areas, and making a determination of those households, of that household growth, how, what income categories will they fall into? Those numbers are then distributed to cities. You have an opportunity to protest those numbers, and there's a protest period. Cities rarely, if ever, win those protests, because what SCAG has in that protest period is essentially a zero-sum game. So if you, as a city, are successful at saying, SCAG's numbers are too high, our growth is going to be 1,000 units less for this next period, SCAG is now stuck with 1,000 units that they must assign to some other city. So it's very difficult to get there. That allocation to individual cities of extremely low income, very low income, low income, for the housing element period, that is the regional housing needs assessment. That's the RENA. So that's the relationship. HCD, so far, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, has not come into play. Cities then adopt their housing elements, prepare their housing elements based on meeting those objectives, then it goes to HCD for their review and certification. HCD, I'm not sure about happy, but their charge is to make sure that each city, each county's housing element, one provides an adequate inventory of land to meet those numbers. So that is looking at the zoning. They then will look at your housing element and say, did you, in fact, do the things you said you were going to do in your last housing element to reduce the, to reduce impediments on the production of housing? I think the more accurate way of saying it is SCAG isn't necessarily, or HCD isn't necessarily happy with those who meet their objectives, but they are very unhappy with those who don't. A lot of people say SCAG, yeah, HCD is never happy. So under the law now, if you don't provide in this housing element period adequate inventory, they just add it to the next one. So if we came up, and let's say we adopt an adequate inventory today, HCD reviews the housing element, and they say, okay, you have provided adequate inventory, you've provided programs to eliminate impediments to the production of housing, you've done everything, and they certify the housing element as adequate, and then we go back and modify the land use element, okay, now we got our certification, let's get rid of the rest of the multifamily, and we will not do that. We'll get rid of our inventory now that we're certified. The net effect is, as we get the next housing element period, you get the next period plus what you didn't have last time. So I would really put it from the standpoint, HCD, if you do what you say you're going to do, HCD is neutral, they say fine, they objectively move on. If you don't, is where they make life difficult.
Yeah, and our land use element has not been adopted yet, and that is true. And I communicated with them, and they said that, basically, if we meet our SCAG projection for the period, I'm doing these off the top of my head, but meet the SCAG projection for the period, have a public hearing, don't have any deficit from the last period, otherwise we would add that on, and have a program in place. If we did have an inadequate inventory to address that, then we would be approved. So it, you know, and I asked them specifically about the SCAG numbers, or sorry, the RENA numbers and the 2030 numbers. So they said what we do have to meet, in order to keep them happier with that, or neutral, is to meet the 2014 numbers, as far as having the adequate inventory. And the quote was, and a smart planning element will allow you a land inventory so that when 2030 numbers come up, you'll have land to still meet those numbers. But it wasn't that we had to put those numbers in place at this point in time.
And part of the pile of things that you have to review is the checklist that an HCD reviewer will use in going through the element?
And just a quick follow-up question on that idea of taking the sphere of influence land outside. These numbers, again, are assuming that we annex those areas. Are they going to potentially pile that on in the next period? What's advantage or disadvantage? You know, the advantage obvious as far as numbers right now, but what would be the disadvantage of leaving some of those areas out?
I think the advantage of distinguishing city from county is, one, you have a more balanced build-out of the general plan, as it would be reviewed by HCD, and will not look as if we are heavy into the very-low density and we're somehow not providing a proportionate share, or not providing for a proportionate share of the lower income. I think the other reason to do it would be, or to show city and county separate, is it is actually a more accurate way of showing it than what we have now lumping it all together, so that you would know, this is what we have in the city, this is what we control, as opposed to the part that would require annexation. And it's probably, in the end, just a better way of showing the inventory. The downside is that the housing element identification of how your land inventory would not exactly track the entirety of the general plan, because there'd be all that county land left. But I think, as we would show the tables, we can show city, county, general plan, total. And so you wouldn't lose it all together and just overall provide a more accurate description.
Because that land is annexed.
Theoretically, if the city, the SCAG projections do not account for expanding of city boundaries, and so if theoretically, if the city would annex a lot of land, the projections would go up, but you would presume that one of the things, and one of the fair arguments to SCAG is, wait a minute, what we just annexed was hillside land. You can't count that and project development the same way as you did on flatland. One of the limitations we have in Southern California, SCAG projections, and even, to a pretty good extent, the RENA numbers are not based on, they're not based on general plans or physical limitations as much as they are in other jurisdictions.
So in summary, the upside of excluding the sphere of influence seems to outweigh the downside, from what I can say, if I try and boil it down to a succinct, at least, conclusion.
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Commissioner Ubersack?
A couple of comments. The table you alluded to, and your number came out to 11,000 or so total build-out units within the city, and the table that we have in front of us, it actually is closer to 13,958. Obviously, there's a discrepancy, but what you and the Planning Commission received and what we received. Having said that, are you comfortable with the notion of not only dealing with this further at the Planning Commission level, but actually addressing some of your other concerns that the Planning Commission felt that they weren't addressed?
Do we feel that's appropriate? Yes, we felt it was appropriate. We wanted to take that.
No, my question is, are you comfortable with the idea of re-looking at it at a Planning Commission level?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next card I have is for Robert Stewart. And Mr. Stewart has given the council a letter that we are in receipt of...
Thank you.
...that I believe is indicated on your slip.
Thank you. Bob Stewart, 11695 Largo Court. The main reason for the slip was to make sure my letter got here. I didn't know if staff was going to have time to get that included in the packet. So I request that if you could slip that in the back of that 300-odd-page notebook, and perhaps, as you work through that, look at some of these larger global issues. Would like to, as if it, as things settle down to specifics, we do have a specific site that has, like all sites, some unique opportunities and some unique constraints, and we want you to make sure, and ask that you consider all of those as you go forward in your deliberations. With regards to the larger issue, I would like to see, you know, some of these tables and all worked out, and I think it's important that we don't create a plan that in 2014's going to blow up on us as a community or on the council. It takes so long for this process to go at the rate we're moving, it just would be bad for the community. So to me, a plan is something that gives us a guideline to go forward in the future, and we should be able to grow, and as it, the community grows, as demographics change, those statistics will come in. But to try and write the statistics down to a year 2014, I think would be short-sighted, hence wouldn't be a plan. So I'd like to see this plan, at least, take everything into account, so as the growth proceeds, whatever that may be, it'll be done in a controlled manner. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions regarding your particular property.
Certainly.
You attended the Planning Commission meeting, and I attended it as well, so we both heard, hopefully, the same thing. The Planning Commissioners, from what I heard them say, is they recommended that they felt that some senior housing would be appropriate behind City Hall.
Correct.
I think what ended up happening is they allocated the whole piece of land to senior housing. I know that you believe that that's something that's in the best interest of the community, and something that the community needs, and it would be of assistance to all of us. I'm just curious to know, obviously, we, as councilmembers, have to make a decision for everyone, and how does it impact everyone else? I've talked to a few residents in the immediate area, and they're concerned about having too much high-density on an open piece of land, given the fact that across from your land is single-family housing, and on both sides is condos, but at a much lower density. So my question to you is, have you talked to some of the residents in the area? Do you know how they feel about the idea of putting in 500 units right behind City Hall, even though it might be just senior housing? I'm just curious to know whether, have you gotten some input from them as to what you think?
Specifically, the answer is no. And to be candid, the reason is, is that this general plan has been in flux for such a long period of time. If I was to present anything to the community, it would be inaccurate. From a Planning Commission a week ago to tonight, tables changed, charts changed, data changes, the colors on the maps changed. It would be irresponsible on my part to do that. Our families owned this property for a significant period of time. The planning on this started back well before any of us were here, and because of that, there's infrastructure in place, city halls, civic centers, senior centers. This is not an accident. It's something that we believed in, in this community, in a very long time, for generations, and we believe this is a part of the growth. So what I presented, a letter that's probably to a level of detail beyond, even though it's abbreviated, of, there's pros and cons to all things. There's many elements of the general plan. So to just focus on one 11-by-17 fold-out is irresponsible. I would be happy to meet with any members of the council, staff, or members of the community to discuss it in the future, but to date, it's been in such flux, it just was not able to present anything to them, other than create, I think, commotion, and that wouldn't be fair to the community.
So you would have no problem with, if the community was made aware of the fact that they're proposing 500 units, you would like to have community input as to whether they thought that was appropriate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And similarly, part of the concern, and I think the earlier agenda items spoke to it well, floor-area ratios is part of the development process and all the things we go through. The, I'm very pleased to see a hotel. Hopefully, that will come forward and be opened within two years. But a test of dwelling units per acre is simply a test, and that list of tests may not be appropriate for all uses. So if you apply that to a Holiday Inn, you're going to get a number that sounds scary, but the facility is an appropriate facility for that use. So I believe that senior housing, the test of taking everything else aside and just putting a dwelling units per acre is probably, certainly a test that staff is obligated to do, and it's used for the charts, but it isn't necessarily the answer. It's just part of the process we go through.
I have a question, partly for you and partly for community development, but this was previously a special planning area under the former general plan. What was envisioned for that special planning area? And I can see what it's being replaced with. Was senior housing part of the plan, or...
As I recall, it did include senior housing. I know that we have envisioned a tie to the senior center, and maybe even an opportunity to expand the senior center, and particularly parking. If the senior center and the civic center are, continue to be successful and vibrant part of the community, we do need more parking. And I know that the city manager, for example, has envisioned a very nice, large-size park back there. And we're, I think we've been hopeful over the years that we might be able to work with the Stewart family to come up with something that would meet all needs, for senior housing, to tie into the civic center, and to provide some park space, as well as some additional parking, and some other facilities that we may not yet have envisioned but would fit into a plan.
And just to follow up that, I know we have a lot of, we have a deficit for low-mod housing, and seniors are frequently in fairly-low-income categories. To what extent could this site help with that deficit and potentially provide low-mod housing of a senior type without scaring off HCD?
Fortunately, this is where there actually is an advantage to state law. At 20 units per acre, it is, by law, considered to be affordable. Where the senior designation that you have actually has an advantage is... Where the senior designation that you have actually has an advantage is use that designation, and it does go to 25 units per acre, but it is age-restricted by the general plan. And so whatever acreage you would put into a senior category at 25 units per acre, we can presume all of that is affordable to lower-income households. Where HCD may get uncomfortable is if we said, okay, we're going to meet all of our lower income with senior. And we have right now a fairly large proportion of senior and student housing meeting our need. But I think it's, given the University Medical Center, given the VA Hospital, that's a reasonable combination to have.
And that we're a blue zone. Yeah, where, where old, older people come to live and where they can live longer for having lived here.
It is also particularly helpful to have that designation and that potential housing near, within walking distance of the East Campus and the VA Hospital. That was another consideration.
Could you clarify briefly? I'm not sure I understand. You said the 20 units per acre, you get the affordable, but the senior 25, what, could you do, senior be affordable at 20, say? Or what, what's that 20 versus 25?
The, the basic rule on affordability is 20 units per acre. So if it's, if it's general plan and zone at 20 units per acre, it is considered to be affordable. The 25 units per acre actually comes from Measure V, and it created, Measure V created a senior housing category that goes up to 25 units per acre.
And as I recall, it was pulled from a previous, from the previous, previous general plan. And that was why it was included. But, but it, it brought it back to life essentially. And so now it's, it's in the general plan.
But at least theoretically, you could have affordable, senior 20, 21, 22, 25, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, and, and I think that you have, because that category goes up to 25, you have a lot more flexibility in dealing with site planning issues. And so if you came out 20, 21 on actual building, you could still point at it and say, that is an affordable project.
Now, quick question, clarification. What I heard you say is that for senior housing, we have a different designation as to whether it's affordable. So since senior housing in Measure V sets 0 to 25, could we then have 5 units an acre and still have senior housing and meet the affordable criteria?
No, the affordability criteria comes from that law that is based on density. So whether it's senior, non-senior, any type of housing, but housing at 20 units per acre or greater as the maximum allowable is considered to be affordable. And that's, that's what the state law does. If you were a city of San Bernardino size, their rules are going to be different in terms of they need to go higher density to get that affordability. In the city of Loma Linda, we can simply say 20 units per acre is affordable, take credit for it.
However, we do have the option of still having senior housing at 10 units an acre if we wanted to. We won't be able to count it as affordable housing.
Correct. It would, it would work the same as any other category at 10 units per acre.
So senior housing doesn't necessarily mean we have to have 25 units an acre, 0 to 25. Obviously, 0 doesn't count, but anything above that would still be categorized as senior if we designated it as senior.
Correct. So you could actually take a site and say, we want it all to be senior, only the northern half may be at 25 unit, you know, at the 25 units per acre. The southerly half would be at a lower density, and you could work something along those lines. We could then take the presumption that the northern half of, at 25 units per acre is affordable. The southern half is, since it's senior, probably moderate income rather than above moderate.
But that would be through the zoning, not, not in the general plan.
That was my next question.
Because the, the general plan, as has been pointed out by our city attorney many times, the designations, the maximum designations are not entitlements. They are simply the, the maximum range. The zoning can further, can further restrict the maximum. And you can include provisions that, for example, if you have somebody who wants to build a senior housing development, and they have the 0 to 25 senior citizen residential designation, that they can get up to 20 units if you want to consider the affordability factor and get credits. Or they can, they can be 0 to 15 or, or whatever. And they would have to do an extra special job if you were to allow them to go to 25. There would have to probably be something on the order of a development agreement that, that we would get a park or, you know, something along those, those lines. So there are a lot of options that could be written into general plan policies and expressed through the zoning ordinance later that would allow you, I think, further density categories within the 0 to 25, providing limitations and options.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Stewart.
Appreciate your time this evening.
And the next slip we have is from Ms. Kathy Glendridge. If anyone else wishes to speak, that's the last name I have. Encourage you to turn in a slip if you have anything else after Ms. Glendridge's comments. Welcome.
Good evening. I just have a few suggestions. My first one being, after reading SCAG's website and, and doing some research about what exactly the city is required to do, I would recommend a conservative approach. And I'll, I'll try to elaborate on that, but not take too long. My first suggestion is that the city comply with SCAG's Regional Housing Need Assessment and then plan conservatively for future build-out. And what I've learned from reading the website is that the city is required to comply with the Regional Housing Need Assessment, but not with SCAG's Regional Transportation Plan Growth Forecast. Those are the growth forecasts that you see in tables in the general plan. The state code specifically says that growth forecast is not a regional housing need allocation. Secondly, HCD approved SCAG's Regional Housing Need Plan for Use by local governments in updating their housing elements. HCD does not have a separate requirement about how many units the city has to build. Giving credit for the about 550 units already constructed to comply with SCAG's Regional Housing Need Assessment, the city is required to plan for about 2,088 additional units. And that's in the general plan. Part of the concern arises because if you read the different tables in the housing element and the land use element, and you do the math, you can tell that Table 2E is telling you the city is actually planning for 5,152 additional units. And again, the Regional Housing Need Assessment is 2,088 at this point for the remaining Of those 2,088, about 1,000 units are for the lower-income categories. And based on the discussion tonight, that you kind of have to shoot for at least the 20-unit-per-acre land use designation to get credit, the city could, for example, it seems like designate about 50 acres at 20 units an acre, and you'd have 1,000 units right there to comply with the regional housing need. However, if you look at the map in the land use element and you read the land use element, what becomes readily apparent is that the city is planning for way more than 1,000 additional units. I'll just give you a couple of examples. There are numerous vacant and underdeveloped parcels that are designated for medium, high, and very high density. A lot of the current smaller, single-family housing in some of the smaller neighborhoods that's actually more affordable to families with more moderate incomes. A lot of that housing can be torn down and converted to multifamily housing. And a lot of those vacant, underdeveloped parcels are not being counted in the build-out numbers. So I actually think the 5,100-unit estimate is low. There's been some discussion earlier tonight, so you've already talked about behind City Hall, that 20 acres is now designated, it's being proposed for 25 units an acre, that's 500 units right there. Most of the special planning areas allow multifamily units. And if you read Table 2E and you do the math, basically, it's telling you that the city's planning for an additional 3,569 multifamily units. Makes sense to me to plan conservatively rather than plan for a huge increase up front. The city has to update its housing element every five years anyway. These planning periods run for seven years. They're not 20-year periods. You know, there are extensive discussions and workshops before these regional housing needs are developed. There's, there's no reason to plan now for what SCAG, the Regional Transportation Plan is deciding Loma Linda should have in the year 2030. The law doesn't require you to follow that. And they're going to start working on the new Regional Housing Need Assessment for the next period in 2011. So I think it's wiser to plan conservatively. These decisions are based on local, you know, a lot of local input, the conditions on the ground at the time, and the law at the time. And you have no idea what the law is going to be, even in a couple of months, let alone the next planning period. And it also sort of looks to me that a lot of the local input drives your ultimate regional housing need. If you look at the regional, SCAG's Regional Transportation Plan Growth Forecast, they went up significantly just between 2004 and 2008. The population went from like 29,000 to 38,000, and the households went from like 13,000 to almost 16,000. And I would suspect that part of the problem is the city adopted the 2006 general plan and told SCAG and HCD that we're going to have this larger increase in units. And SCAG in response said, well, that's great, because we have to designate about 700,000 units to this region, so we'll give you more. So the city, it appears to me, could get in this vicious cycle where you're driving up your own regional housing need. I, I would recommend that you not approve the general plan until it's brought into compliance with the 96 Hillside Initiative. Lloyd made the point that all the Measure V provisions are italicized, and that's sort of to distinguish the provisions only the voters can change. The voters also adopted the 96 Initiative. All those provisions should be italicized. The vote, when they, when the voters adopted that initiative, they directed that certain language should be included in the general plan and that the map, the land use map, look a certain way. Not all of those sections are in the proposed general plan. There's about four of them missing, and I could talk to Deborah about it if, if you want me to specify them later. Just a few issues related to Measure V. It doesn't look like the proposed general plan is completely consistent with Measure V. And this plan, this comment also applies to the 96 Initiative. In the land use element, it is not, it is not clear what the maximum allowable densities are, because the only, it says the maximum allowed densities are like 1 unit per 10, but they don't say what the initiatives actually allow. And they actually allow density bonuses and clustering. And so it should be clarified that actually the 96 Initiative and Measure V do allow higher densities with clustering. And that would also be consistent with the way the South Hills is written, because they give the densities for clustering and non clustering. And expanded hillside area, the low-density hillside preservation area, except for the Measure V, that's not correctly depicted on the map. One of the concerns I have in the latest map that was just released, all of the city-owned land in the hills, which is, you know, now named South Hills Preserve, it is not clear from that map that a good chunk of the city-owned land and a good, well, southwest of the fault, the city-owned land is not in the 96 Initiative area. But the city-owned land north of the fault, you know, part of that is in the 96 Initiative area. Oh, boy. Okay. So the, and, oh, well, this will actually be helpful. Okay. According to the 96 Initiative, this northwestern corner actually extends to the western city limits. So on almost every map in the plan, instead of the fault line going to the western city limits, it looks like you, you could put a road through here, and you're not in the 96 Initiative area. And that is not how the map looks in the 96 Initiative. It is very clear it extends all the way to the city limits. You cannot go from this parcel to this parcel, and you don't end up over here. It's also not clear from this map now that down this fault line, and where is it? It's up to about here. This is actually closer to the 96 Initiative area. Whoa. So this part, all of the city-owned land, this is in the 96 Initiative area, and it's not clear from this map. And I'm not sure if this is a mistake or if the city is interpreting Measure T that way. But also, this section, or would it be, it would be about here of the city-owned land is in the low-density hillside preservation of Measure V. So again, I'm not sure if, you know, it's just not clear from the map. You'd actually have to read the initiatives to know that. You couldn't tell from the map or if the city's interpreting Measure T that way. So that is a comment I have.
Kathy, could, I, I saw some scrunched eyebrows when you mentioned the thing about the road on the, on the west. Could you explain that in a little bit more detail?
Well, the comment I'm making is that what Measure V says is that you cannot, you cannot put a road through, like, for instance, to Richie Canyon Road, Richie Canyon Road up to Oakwood. And Measure V sets forth those limitations in reference to where the 96 Initiative area is. So if you take land out of the 96 Initiative area and you kind of scoot it over here, I just don't want somebody to come in and look at this map and go, well, it looks to me like you could go from this area to here, and you're not, you know, the, the 96 Initiative starts over here, so you're fine. It really should be more like this. If you look at the map, it's very clear that the 96 Initiative cuts in here. You cannot, you can't put a road through there because of the road restrictions in the, in primarily Measure V. But there were road restrictions in the 96 Initiative, too.
So you're saying that the map is drawn differently to show that there is a way within, within the city limits on this map to sneak in southwest of the fault with a road?
Well, to take a road, like, for a while, and even the 96 Initiative allowed a road going up Oakwood and through the 96 Initiative connecting to Richie Canyon. But then Measure V said you actually cannot do that. And my concern is if this does not match the 96 Initiative and Measure V, then you're going to actually have to go, you know, somebody will land or somebody's going to come in and have to pull those initiatives and read it and figure out where the boundaries properly are, they're going to look at it and go, well, it looks to me like you could put a road through there. I, I just think it should be reflected, and really, it has to be reflected like the voters directed.
Well, here's, here's the issue that we ran into, and, and the map was, was that way when we adopted it in 2006, is that the 96 Initiative defines the initiative area based on the fault line. And when we drew a, when we had to go back and do a map based on GIS, we found that the actual fault location was here and not over there. So what we did was we, we had to do a map that, that was geographically correct to interpret that. I mean, and, and if it follows the fault line, then we, we, we know where the fault line is, is truly located. And the map that was done in 90, what was the year?
96.
In 96. It was not done by GIS, it was hand-drawn.
Well, I guess my, my, my response to that would be that you interpret the voters' intent by looking at the language of the initiative. And there is a picture of the map in the back of the initiative that the voters specifically adopted. And it's very clear, looking at that picture. I, I really don't, it's very clear, looking at the picture, that the 96 Initiative area clearly extends to the western limits.
I, I don't think we realized that there was an intent to, to preclude, you know, roadways and whatnot there. We were just reading the description in the text. And so we, with the GIS tools that we had at hand, we, we drew it based on that description. You know, I mean, if, if the council would like us to change it, that's not a problem. I, I'm just not sure how we justify.
I don't know, I don't know how we can change an initiative, but my-
No, I mean, the interpretation of it.
Yeah. Well, my next question is if indeed the fault line does allow a road to sneak through there, does Measure V close that loophole by saying there shall be no road connecting the two?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it closes the loophole, but it references the 96 Initiative area. So if the 96 Initiative area is not correctly reflected on the map, someone might get the wrong impression from the map. And it just leads to confusion if things are not accurately depicted. That's my concern. I notice, in regard to Special Planning Area D, and it looks like you're not going to adopt the general plan tonight anyway, just based on the comments that have been made so far. But I did have the concern that it's agendized as a, you know, discussing possible direction to staff about, direction to staff about possible rescission of the specific- specific plans. And it does seem more logical, and I guess Louis said this in their letter too, to act on the court's order. There is that court order out there saying the council must reverse the approvals or put them on the ballot. It seems more logical to follow the court order before you go and do something new for area D. And just in reference to that area, that obviously has been a highly contentious area. Multiple lawsuits were filed by developers in relation to it and the residents won them all. But I would just like to say, you know, that the council does now have the opportunity to go back and do something better for that area. And that was a very fierce battle. That was very hard fought for by the residents. And so we would appreciate consideration of what the community's, you know, vision is for that area and what they'd like to see. Almost done. Two comments. It appears to me that the general plan is not internally consistent and I'll just give you two examples. Again, if you read Table 2E, according to that table, it looks like the city's planning for 5,152 additional units. But if you read Table 5V, it says the city's planning for an additional 3,172 units. And a difference of 2,000 units, that's very significant and I think those numbers should match. And secondly, the land use element allows substantially more units than that Table TV, 5V, is disclosing. And I'll try to wrap up because I know I've gone over. We would recommend, just on the water issue, and I will just read you two sentences from the EIR because this is a very important issue, you know, according to the final, you know, the addendum to the final EIR, and this came out a couple of months ago. So it says, and this is just one of the quotes, "The city produces enough water to meet the projected average daily demand at build-out but not enough to supply peak daily demand. Although the EIR recognizes the water supply issues and encourages the use of water conservation measures, the policies do not ensure the provision of water supplies adequate to support peak demand development that may occur as a result of general plan implementation." And I would just like to note, the city, even though here it appears to be acknowledging that you know you're not going to have enough water to meet peak demand, the city consistently relies on the wrong numbers. If you read, I think it's Table 6D in the draft EIR, what the city has done is the city consistently relies on the numbers for the 1973 general plan. If you look at the numbers for the proposed general plan, what the city is telling us, everybody who reads the EIR, that you're planning for so many additional units and development that you're actually not going to have enough water to supply an average or a peak demand day. And, you know, the EIR actually, the addendum actually has this statement in it, "The new demand for water may affect the water available for emergency fire flow." And it says, "Despite the implementation of these water conservation measures, there would be no mechanism in place that would ensure that water would be available after future development is built. We would suggest that the city put a mechanism in place to ensure that development does not exceed the water supply." That's a real concern. There needs to be policies in the general plan or it needs to be somehow addressed. Thank you for considering those issues and I will wrap up. Do you want your pointer back? Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I just, I wonder if there's any response to the water.
I was joining in that request.
Well, it's a state law that we cannot, we cannot overbuild based on water supply.
Yeah. When the addendum was prepared, there was not included information on new wells that Public Works has been obtaining. And maybe Jarb can address that. There is a letter that was in the response to comments that we had prepared previously that Jarb had written to describe efforts that Public Works has actually already accomplished.
Yes, since the general plan was approved in 2006, we have drilled three new wells, two by Lockheed Martin and one by the City of Loma Linda. And this afternoon, we just had a bid opening to equip that well that was drilled by the city. So we planned for it, so hopefully we'll have enough water to meet the general plan.
Well, certainly something I think appropriate that needs to be looked at and make sure we're in agreement that we do meet that. And I think among a number of things, that's what we need to work on between now and when we take some further action.
Yes. And in addition to that, every five years, the state requires a city to do an urban water management plan, which look at the general plan, look at the growth and the water, the groundwater quantity that can provide to the city.
Kathy, one other comment?
I was trying, I deleted this part because I was trying to wrap up. The city provided an inter-office memo. And basically what the inter-office memo says is that they actually think that now they're going to have, well, they do. They say they conclude they're going to have enough water to meet peak demand day. There's a couple of issues. Again, the city is relying on the wrong numbers. If you read Table 6D in the draft EIR, the demand for peak demand day is over 23,000 gallons per minute. And in that inter-office memo, it says the city is now planning to have 17,850 gallons per minute. My second comment about that memo is 6,800 of the gallons per minute out of the 17,850 are projected. Now, it's my understanding that before you drill a well, you don't know what the water quality and capacity is going to be. So my question is, I haven't seen the documentation, but is the city identifying 6,800 of the amount as projected because it's really not guaranteed? The city is just kind of hoping? In which case, if it's, if that's really not a capacity that the city can count on, the real capacity is 11,050 gallons per minute and the city's back in the situation where you can't meet the average daily demand, which is 11,600 gallons per minute, or the peak? Okay. My second question about the water code. When University Village and Orchard Park were approved, the EIR was given to the San Bernardino, I think it's called the Municipal Water District, and they sent a letter to the city and they said, "The EIR clearly does not meet or answer the fundamental question, which must be answered in the water code, which is where's the long-term water supply going to come from?" So the state code is not going to save the city from itself. And the city went ahead and approved 2,500 units even though the San Bernardino Water District said, "You're not meeting the water code. You haven't answered that question." So I'm back to, I think the city needs to plan for itself because the city doesn't always follow those state codes. And I mean, I've got the letter. I think I've got it here tonight in case anybody wants to see it. So I think there should be a mechanism in place that the city actually does follow.
I have a question about that. If, from everything that I'm hearing, sounds like we're by far exceeding the amount of units that we should be building. And if we actually met the minimum required, not the minimum, but exceed the minimum by a certain amount, is it reasonable to believe that then we may be able to meet our water supply issue if we significantly decrease the amount of units in the city?
Well, logically, if you do decrease the amount of units and the amount of development, it decreases the water demand. I would imagine the city would have to run the numbers. You decrease it to a certain point, so now what is the average daily demand at build-out and what is the maximum daily demand at build-out for whatever number you're now targeting?
So in other words, the only way to really address the water issue safely would be to not exceed the amount of houses we're putting into the city at this point?
Well, I imagine the city can also put policies in place that if you're not going to have the water capacity, you don't approve as much development. You know, you don't, you don't put the development in front of the water infrastructure. So.
Thank you.
Good. If we have-
I have just, I have an underlying question. I understand that we're on a very large aquifer and I understand that we're not the only ones with straws dipping down into it. Can we just solve all of our water problems by drilling more wells? Or do we have to assure that we have some other water that's coming in and replenishing those aquifers at the same rate? To what extent do we have to cooperate with regional water agencies to make sure that we're not taking more than our fair share and?
Yes, we do. We do work with the regional, which is the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. So we work with them to make sure that they, their responsibility is to furnish the groundwater and we pump the water from there.
So then in any future project approvals, if they have an objection to what we've done, do we, do we have to work with them on that? Or do we just say, well, we think we can just put more straws in the aquifer?
The basin is managed by a water master, which is Muni. And they determine who, how many wells you can actually draw, drill and how much water each jurisdiction is allowed to take.
So our current projections are within that limit?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, so we work with them on-
And they've secured enough water from Northern California to replenish the aquifer, even with the vicissitudes of judges who determine that some smelt needs more water?
Yes.
I wouldn't go that far. I just wanted to comment on that. I sit on the advisory board and I attend a number of water meetings. And one of the problems, as many of you have known, and Manny, he was in the audience earlier here, I believe, gave us a wonderful water presentation about our whole area actually being in a severe drought. One of the problems we're having is that, yes, Loma Linda happens to sit at the deeper end of the pool and has the ability to gather water, but there's wells in San Bernardino that are running dry. Now, what's happening is this whole aquifer that we're sitting on does have to be replenished with water from the north. There has been some limitations on how much water we're getting from the north. The problem we're having is that as the pool gets smaller, we're going to have to import more water from the north. We don't actually have the ability to get as much water as we'd want. So as a result, we're going to have to, the price of water is increasing substantially. At some point, those increases are going to have to be passed on to the rest of us. One of the problems we're having as a state is we're full of regulations and all these wonderful plans about how we're planning ahead and we're just really smart and we got engineers and everything's perfect, but yet cities are running out of water. So it's very clear to me that those plans are not always the best thing for our community. And what we're doing is we're relying on the same guidelines and we're putting ourselves in jeopardy of overdeveloping. And I think that it is important that we do our fair part in making sure that we only plan smartly so we have enough water for all of our residents. And I think it would be unfair for all of them for simply to increase all of their water rates just because we as a city planned poorly 20 years prior. So that's a major concern.
And in the interest of time, maybe one more comment on the water and then we'll try and move on. I know there's so many elements we wish we had time to comment on, but-
Actually, I was, I was going to go down that path of just saying, I know it's getting late. My question is, I know there were a number of comments made about water. Could staff come back next time and perhaps address some of Ms. Glendridge's comments on the water? Because there's enough issues that we can't deal with tonight.
Again, I totally agree. I think all appropriate concerns and that's the intent of this meeting, to at least bring those issues up. We can't solve them all tonight. And I think those are very legitimate issues and among many we will ask follow-ups on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we were looking for input and we've heard. Thank you.
Great.
I'm Bob Frost and I live at 24928 Lawton Avenue. I'm speaking on behalf of Loma Linda University this evening. I've found it interesting and challenging during the last eight years or so as we've worked together on the general plan. And I attended many different types of meetings with many of you during this time. And I think we're getting, you know, getting close to refining our general plan. We have a couple of concerns about areas that the university owns most of the land in. The areas that we're primarily concerned about tonight are Area, Special Planning Area B. Special Planning Area A is here, wet in the academy. And then B is east of Anderson. And then C is the university area, which university owns much of that land, but not all of it. We feel fairly comfortable with the guiding policies that have been written, or A and C. But during the last number of years, as time's gone along, some of our planning for the future is changing. And Special Planning Area B is primarily designated, the guiding policy is, for mixed use mainly with residential office and some park and recreational areas. As we think about the future expansion of the university, we're looking at possibly putting some academic space in that area. So we would prefer that Special Planning Area B not be as restrictive as it is. We'd like it to also include the, many of the uses that are designated in Area A would include professional educational facilities for Special Planning Area B. So as we work on refining the policy, we'd like that to be taken into consideration. And we thank everyone for all their time and effort.
I have a quick question, specific to Area B, this particular general plan. And my understanding is that most of it was, you know, put together with some input from the university and addressing their needs.
Yes.
And one of the things that it states is that it allows for a maximum of 525 dwelling units. Do you anticipate that's something that the university still is thinking, proposing? Or do you know what the true plans are for that area?
We don't know exactly how many, but we are expecting that there will be a number of residential units in the area.
So you like to make sure that you have the flexibility to allow for residential units, which I assume would be mostly used for student housing?
Right. We want the flexibility that we can use it for academic purposes.
As well.
For having classrooms and offices and maybe even areas where we might seek patience.
But are you still comfortable with allowing up to 525 units?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
And we appreciate what you're doing for our community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of the slips. Any other comments before we conclude the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. As we mentioned previously, I don't think we're in any position to take action as far as approving elements of general plan update. I would believe that staff has heard many a concern and comment that council would like to direct staff and consultants to work through with, you know, leaving the sphere of influence out, getting numbers correct. You know, I better be quiet, trying to keep things brief. I don't need to go through the whole list unless, is there any issues the rest of the council would like to highlight or staff has a question as to what we need to work through and what directions to at least attempt to go, even though we may not be unanimous on all those?
Just two very brief questions. One is, when we were talking about the greenhouse gases that need to be reduced, I'd appreciate having you come back and explain what things we would have to change to meet that. And then the second comment is, I noticed the term Metrolink was used. Metrolink doesn't actually access our town. Did you mean Amtrak or did you actually mean Metrolink? And I think that was from the planning commission. So I guess that's the question. What did the planning commission- What did the planning commission mean? The term "MetroLink" was used earlier.
I believe that that was the term that, that was submitted by Commissioner Rojas.
Okay, 'cause they're, Metro, okay, there needs to be, maybe the city attorney can comment on that. The problem with that is, MetroLink doesn't have access without a contract with the railroad. Amtrak does have the right to come out here. MetroLink does not.
I think the easy way of solving that is, is rather than specify who's providing the service, rail commuter service, or something like that, so it could be either system.
That's fine. If, if you go there, I, I was just wanting to clarify whether it was that specifically intended, and if not, then that's great. Okay.
Any other directions for staff and consultants?
Well, in reference to that particular comment, I, I was at the planning commission, and I think Commissioner Rojas knew what he was referring to. He was mentioning, mentioning MetroLink. He didn't mean just any train. I think there's a big difference between MetroLink and anything else at this point. One of my concerns is, there've been a number of issues brought up, and it addresses a spectrum of areas and, and different changes that we need to make to it, to accommodate some of these concerns. A lot of those things are things that the planning commission looked at. It appeared as if, at some point, that was not adequately taken care of. I've heard from Commissioner Laurie that she would welcome the idea of readdressing some of these concerns. So, one of the things that I would like to suggest is that the staff make any of the changes, and take it back to the planning commission, have the planning commission further address it, and then approve it, and then bring it back to us. I think that would be a good way to ensure that, that's why we have the process of having a planning commission, have them provide further input, and ensure that they follow through with it. That's my recommendation.
Actually, if this results in significant changes to the general plan, to meet state law requirements, we'd have to go back to planning commission anyway, because they, they have to weigh in on changes.
Except, you don't wanna have to go through that several times, so...
No.
Well, that's why we'll do it again, right, this time.
But I, I think the suggestion that Deb perhaps was getting to was that staff complete the work that the council has suggested, and bring it back to council, make sure that council is, is fully up to speed, and that there are no additional significant changes recommended by the city council, before it, it should go back to planning commission. Because if, if you go back and forth several times, it, it delays the process. And ultimately, it has to be the city council to make those final policy decisions.
I would agree. And there's no doubt about it, that's really the best way to do it. Efficiency here is the key. However, in this particular case, it was very clear, I attended both planning commission meetings. I attended the one in which they made their recommendations, and I also attended the one in which the recommendations were presented in front, in front of them. It was fairly clear that it wasn't what they envisioned. I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice by not respecting the fact that we have a body that's supposed to give us input. We're basically skipping them to a certain extent, only approving part of what they recommended, and then expect us to finally fix it, because some of those recommendations perhaps weren't implemented. I think in this particular issue, this is an important document that sets land use policy for the next 30 years. We, I know we've had multiple meetings, multiple hearings, and everybody's eager to get it passed. However, we've gotta ensure that we do it right. And I truly believe that it would behoove us to actually use the different entities that we've created to assist us in making land use decisions. And I think by not sending it back, we're basically telling them, "Well, you know, you had your shot at it, so like, we can implement some of it, that's okay, we'll take care of it." And I, I don't think that's the role of the planning commission. Their role is to really advise us, and I really respect their input and their suggestions. And I think it would be best that we send it back to them, so that they can feel comfortable that their own recommendations were seriously taken into account and adopted. If, if, if we do it this way, we're setting a precedent in which the planning commission, all it does is make recommendations, some of them get followed, oh, too bad. You know, you had your shot. And I believe that, that's not the message we, we should be sending. So, that is why I believe we should send it back to the planning commission.
I, I didn't understand that it wasn't gonna go back. Your recommendation was that it first come back here, so that we can see that our suggestions that we've done now, then it would go back to the planning commission.
That's not what I heard.
That's, that was his suggestion.
My comment, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, was that, in order to keep the process moving as expeditiously as possible, that rather than send it back to the planning commission for further input, that you complete the review at, at this level, and if there are new matters that have not been considered by the planning commission, those may have to go back for their recommendation, review, and, and report. But ultimately, the city council has to draft and approve the general plan, not the planning commission. Their role is somewhat limited to comment and make recommendations. But it would be a little bit problematic to send it back to them every time some new matter comes up, rather than waiting till the end of the process, and if there are material changes that need to be reviewed, that they review all of those at, at one fell swoop. We're, we're trying to keep the process moving expeditiously. It's, it's obviously very costly, and there are litigation issues as well, that we're trying to deal with, to get this process completed with all the input from the public, and, but most importantly, the input from the city council that is necessary to finalize the general plan.
Mr. Chair?
Um, I have...
I realize you're not in a public setting anymore, but may I make a comment?
Sure. Just one minute at microphone. Identify yourself, please, and let's keep it just to one minute, please.
Thank you. My name is David Eglar, living at 11869 Cardinal Court. And I'm a retiree. And I don't, haven't been in these conversations very long, to listen to them. But regarding the process here tonight, picking up on the attorney's comment here, if in fact, the city council is to be making then, specific recommendations on the plan presentation, it would seem to me that a couple of the people's comments that were presented tonight then really need to be specifically addressed by you, and you then make comments, so that the, the staff can know what to do. Either you need to do it, or the planning commission needs to do it. Now, I don't know these people, but the first lady, and she's on the planning commission, obviously, she got mixed up in all the numbers and so on, but anyway, that was really a problem between her and the numbers, and you, and so on. But the lady here, let's see, your name is Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, she gave a whole list of things. Now, the one thing that you responded on, as I was listening, was the issue of water. But obviously, you don't wanna have more people getting, or more residents here than there's water. But she's given a whole list of things that you really need to respond to, if you're going to deal with what's been put on the plan. Either you do it, or you have Kathy go... Are you a member of the planning commission?
No.
Okay. Well, anyway, or Kathy go to the planning commission, or somebody, because, for instance, you take her comment about, "We need to proceed on this conservatively, and not have more numbers than the, you know, whatever the various models are." Well, do you want to do that? Or do you not want to do that? What should the people on the staff be doing? So, this woman has given a long list of some very significant items that you need to either vote up or down on, in terms of what people should do next. So that would be my suggestion tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess I'll take my opportunity to weigh in. I, I agree with the bulk of Councilmember Popescu's comments. I think there's unquestionably major issues, material changes, to all the general plan elements that were voted on by the planning commission, that it's very clear from comments that they've made, that they are not comfortable with some of those recommendations at this point. Unless I am convinced there's overwhelming legal issues, which I haven't been, I agree, they're the body we're looking for, for direction to clarify all these issues, including specific issues with the water. Do we have enough? Do we have the correct figures with taking this land out of the sphere of influence? There's a lot of elements that I think we've heard a consensus to go back and plug in, and see what does result from that. So, speaking my opinion and, and conclusion, I would like to see staff, again, take all these questions, get the most accurate numbers that we can, answer the questions that have been brought up tonight, and then see that go back for an analysis. I would hope with only one more meeting of the planning commission, I think we're all sensitive, we need to be expeditious, but I don't think we're to the point that we can ignore those concerns from the planning commission. So, again, tonight, I think we need to certainly give consensus, if, if that's a consensus, to go in that direction of having staff and consultants go through and answer, and these questions, put in best numbers, and take it back to planning commission. I see that as, as first issue. Do we have a consensus on that, to ask for that direction?
Before I make a motion, I just had a question of staff. If we, as a council, decide that we wanna send it back to planning commission, obviously, you'll have to take time to address these concerns. Any timeframe? Can you give us an indication of what that would require? I know that we're trying to move it expeditiously, and I agree with Mayor Brower, that I think one meeting at the planning commission should suffice, but that's only assuming that we get everything worked out.
I'm thinking that, given the amount of information that we were able to get tonight, added to the concerns that we had about the planning commission's recommendations, and their frustrations, I'm a little uncomfortable giving you a timeframe, because I, what I'd like to do is kind of assess what we need to do. And I also feel that, considering the, the, the way we've been rushed in the last couple of weeks, we wanna do it right, but we also wanna keep moving. Let, if, if the council so desires, we could come back with a schedule, not to the next meeting, but just come up with a schedule. And I, and I'm, we're gonna have to re-advertise to go back to planning commission.
I, I don't wanna feel like we're rushing you, and...
And I, I definitely wanna pull the city manager in and get his thoughts on this.
One other comment I wanted to make as to why I believe we need to go back to planning commissioner, the planning commission, is that we've had two letters from property, actually, three property owners, who have all expressed us concerns about various issues. I think that it would be best that those individuals, perhaps, they have a say, and have, are able to express their viewpoints with the planning commissioners. Hopefully, some of those concerns could be addressed there, which would make, I think, our jobs easier, if all those things go through a process. And that's one more reason why I believe that the planning commission would be properly used.
If city attorney doesn't object, I believe we could do this by consensus to direct these comments and concerns back to planning commission. Is that acceptable? Or would you prefer some other form of action to do that? Well, as Deborah mentioned, the matter will have to be re-advertised, both for the planning commission, and then again, for the city council, unless you, you keep a, a date on
I was looking at maybe the last, the second meeting in February, or the first meeting in March, and...
I don't think the council's asking for a date. They just want, I think the question was, to send it back to planning commission or not?
Yes.
Correct?
I think that's the main question, whether we need a specific date. You can advise us, but the key question is that...
If council wants to go back to planning commission, it goes back to planning commission. It's just that simple.
You can certainly do that. The question was scheduling another date on your calendar, and that would depend upon when the planning commission could, could act again.
I think it also depends on when we can get the changes to them, not just, you know, I mean, we, we're gonna target a date, but I, I, I don't think it's gonna be in February.
Question, if we, if we were to continue this item to March, you know, it's way down the line, would that be long enough? And then we wouldn't have to re-advertise hypothetically? Is that, is that important, to try to avoid that?
Continue to any date you, you so desire, and then if March comes, and you can continue...
You continue it again. Yeah, exactly. Why we do that?
We only have one meeting in March, I believe, March 10.
That's right.
If there's no objection to that, I would entertain a motion to continue it to that March date, with further direction that staff and planning commission move forward with all these concerns, and, and try and work through the issues that we've brought up tonight.
Is there, is there any lack of clarity on the part of staff about which of the comments that were made tonight has support from the city council, you know? Do you, do you feel like we need to up or down on any issues? Do you feel like there's divided opinion? Do you think it's a consensus, that all of the things that were mentioned are reasonable and need to be addressed? Or some of them can be just tossed aside as inconsequential?
I think the steward property, I, I would benefit from a little more clarity.
Let's say the concerns about special project area B, the written concerns about special project area D, and the sequencing of events. Are there any of those things that, that you feel you need more input?
It gets into that fine line. I, I think, there's no question, we need to give direction as council, but on the other hand, we're trying to respect the input and feedback from planning commission. It is a fine line to, to not overstep that. So, it's a tough one to answer, but I think it's obviously an appropriate question.
And I, I agree with that, but, but are the public comments that were received tonight going to be made available to the planning commission, so they can deal with them? Or do we require everyone to come back and reiterate them?
No, we, we will make the comments available to the planning commission as well.
Are we ready for an action?
Yeah, I'll move to put it to the March meeting, to continue this to the March meeting.
And direct...
And, and the comment, direct it back to planning commission.
With all the comments.
With all the comments.
So forth, concerns tonight.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? I believe it carries unanimously. Appreciate everybody's patience on this. It's a difficult process. One of the frustrations of government, to try and work things through in an efficient manner, but it is very difficult to be as efficient as we would like, as well as give opportunity for input.
Just two quick questions. Mr. City Manager, I've forgotten, actually, when we started this general plan process.
About eight years ago.
It'd be curious to know, just how much this has cost us so far? My second question is...
A little over a million dollars.
Will I actually live long enough to see this thing finished?
Maybe not.
I'm gonna have to disagree with you on that.
Let's move on to item five. Item five is a public hearing, and we have indication this is to be continued. Is that the current information that's correct?
Yes.
Alrighty. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that can't be here at the anticipated next meeting, or do we have a date specific for this item?
Which item? I'm sorry.
Item five.
Oh, um, let's see, to November, I'm sorry, to February 24th.
If there's anyone that anticipates they won't be able to address this on February 24th... If there's anyone that anticipates they won't be able to address this on February 24th... 24th, we'll open the public hearing. Don't see anyone rising to testify on that, so I will close the public hearing, and you need a specific motion to continue it to that date?
Yes.
Okay. Looking for...
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, no opposition. Item number six, this is a joint public hearing of city council and redevelopment agency, and we'll ask agency chairman Rigsby to call the redevelopment agency to order.
Redevelopment agency's called to order, we'll dispense with the roll call.
Staff, any additional comments on authorizing the sale? See, no further comments from staff, this is a public hearing, we'll formally open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, direction by council.
I move council bill 2000-9 to authorize the sale of 53920 by DC to...
Six A has been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? No opposition, and turn it over to agency chairman.
I move CRA bill 2000-901, authorizing the sale of the same property in the same county.
Second. I'll second it again.
Okay, any discussion of the item? Any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it.
Consent calendar, any comments on the consent calendar, it's moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, consent calendar is approved. Old business, have some cleanup language to help in case of disaster, and we hope we won't need it, but we need to make sure we have this properly in place, and this is a second reading and roll call vote. Any comments from staff? If not, ready for direction from council?
I move that we pass council bill 02008-10, establishing regulations as amendments to the building code for the expenditure repair of damaged structures.
Been moved, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say, is this a roll call? Madam Clerk, sorry, trying to rush this.
And I assume that in that wording, we waive the reading and direct clerk to read by title only?
That's, I believe, what I heard.
I thought I heard that.
It is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, State of California, Adding a New Chapter 15.60 to Title 15 of the Municipal Code Relating to Repair of Damaged Structures." You may vote. And it passes unanimously.
Item 13, and this is a report from city manager regarding possible Amtrak station. As with our general plan discussion, mainly a report, I think succinct comments would be in order, but we'll probably at this late hour have to leave it at that.
How dispense with comments?
Comments from council on the report, right now it's just recommended city council receive and file this report.
My only comment on it, I'm sure Mr. Ziprick may want to weigh in, since this is something that he's been working on. We established a committee to look at the possibility of having an Amtrak station in Loma Linda, and one of my concerns is that we might be jumping ahead of ourselves by discussing location before we actually really look seriously at what is the possibility of having an Amtrak station. I know we've gotten a report from Amtrak stating that it would be a profitable venture for them, and there's the need to have one in Loma Linda. I know there's been talk about having one here because it might benefit the medical center and the university to try to bring people here by rail. However, I think since we've created this committee, that we, as a council, need to give some direction to the committee to provide us with some more information and data that would help us, as a council member and the community, feel like, you know, this is a worthy project, that we need to, you know, expend energy and time and money. We've already, according to this report, we've already started talking to a consultant about spending money on a possible location, and that may be okay at this point, but I'm a little concerned that we're starting getting ahead of ourselves by spending money before we've actually even decided that a train station is really what this community is needing. So, I want to open up to the council to give us some input as to what else they, questions they might have regarding this train station, and what are the things that, you know, we want answered before we proceed with further planning of it.
Very briefly in response, I know when this was brought in August, we presented it, and actually you made the motion to, which I seconded, to approach Amtrak and ask them to consider putting a station here, they come back favorably, if we didn't mean that, I guess we shouldn't have done it. I mean, there's a lot of reasons that we cited in the resolution, which we all voted yes on, which to elaborate now, there's quite a few reasons, and obviously, Amtrak's already investing something in it, we heard the committee, you know, I understand you believe the Planning Commission was referring to MetroLink, I wasn't there, but my understanding is that they were supporting rail, they were, the concept of rail passenger service, the train runs through here already, there's a discussion of making it go daily, it's going to happen, eventually it'll go daily, and we're a very logical spot for a station. I talked to somebody from RCTC, they've said that we're very logical from Riverside's perspective, they're, you know, if we're trying to bring traffic down, which is in line with Measure V, it's another positive for it, we already have the train going through here, it's not like we're starting a new train, we just want a platform, we aren't talking about spending huge amounts of extravagant dollars on something, but, and I know you raised a concern the other day in a column, that, you know, it'd be a bus station, I'm thinking maybe a bus stop, if Omni-Trans wants to stop there where the train comes in, but there are four bus stops in front of the academy now, and, or next to it, and this would just be one more half a mile, I clocked it, it's half a mile from the entrance of the elementary to where the station might be, and it hasn't been firmly decided exactly where it's going to go, the committee includes the university, so we've been just talking. You know, I think at some point, if we're going to try to bring traffic down, bring some alternatives in, gasoline's going back up in price, we really want to make this town welcoming to a variety of people. So I thought when we, you and I supported it back in August, that was an indication of essentially a green light to go ahead. If you're saying it isn't, you know, when we ask Amtrak, we're serious about doing something.
I don't necessarily disagree with any of your statements, I haven't changed my opinion as to whether an Amtrak station is feasible.
Okay, good.
I would like to get some more information as to what would make it feasible. I support the idea of having possibly an Amtrak station here, but I'd like to get some more information as to what are the benefits to our community. I know we have 13,000 employees at university, we have tens of thousands of patients who come into our town every day, but that in itself may not be enough, we need to get, I would like information such as, how many of those patients, employees, staff members live in an area, at this point, it would have to be Palm Springs area, that's where the train would be coming from in the morning, and how many of those would possibly use the train? I think that you have to take into account that, you know, and I supported that notion to look into it, and I started looking into it myself, and I found that the train only comes through our town three times a week, and you're saying that it might come five times a week, and that's fine.
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Both directions.
Seven, but even with that, I would like to get some information, because right now, from what I've studied so far, and correct me if I'm wrong, the train leaves at 6:30 in the morning, and approximately would arrive in Loma Linda at approximately 8:30, which is almost a two-hour train ride. If you get into a car and you don't have traffic, and of course you'll have some traffic, you could probably get here in less time than that, nevertheless...
Actually, the train, I've been monitoring it, the train generally scheduled to go through about 7:30.
Okay.
From Palm Springs, it leaves at about 6:37, and it gets here about, about exactly one hour later, and goes to LA in another, after that.
I'm going to take the risk of stepping on both my colleagues' toes.
Yeah, it's okay, I'm ready to stop.
You both have good points, it is late, this is meant as a report, I do think, obviously, we need to make some additional decisions on this, and I think this needs to be put on a future council agenda for more discussion and more information, but if I could see if we can wrap this up for tonight and leave it more of a report, council?
Yeah, it wasn't intended to be a report, it was intended to be the last half of the sentence, which is the discussion and direction to staff, after the semicolon. The problem that I saw is that the location is being determined by this committee, and by private negotiations between parties that are not subject to review by the full five members of the council, and my major concern is that this, this issue is more divisive than, than some of the comments would lead you to believe. There are people out there who have an aversion to having a train station near an elementary school, and the statement that, that it's just, you know, we all agreed, the committee agreed, the university agreed, everybody agreed, is a little bit, I think, one-sided, I think there's, I think this needs to be hashed out in a public forum, I think a bit better, and that's the purpose for bringing it up tonight, is to get it into a public forum, get it out of a small subset of the, of the city council, whether it be in a committee, or in an unrelated negotiation about another topic. I think it needs to be all five of us here, and I think there needs to be some kind of public input.
Well, Dusty, I did suggest that be on the agenda tonight, there's no effort to keep it from anything but being very open, it's been brought up basically every meeting, and obviously, you're being, obviously kept somewhat informed on where the discussions have gone, but the university does have a person on the task force, and there have been quite a few meetings, so, anyway, we can bring it back, I appreciate what the mayor's saying, it's getting late, and don't want to prolong it.
Should we, then I move that we continue this item until the next council meeting so we can further discuss it, unless, Mr. Ziprick, you have a suggestion as to when else we should be discussing it?
I think it's fine, I, you know, I appreciate we had a long agenda tonight, and I think that, I think that it's important for this community to develop some other means of getting large numbers of people in and out, we can go into a lot more detail, there's more things proposed than the three times a week train that Amtrak's talking about making it daily, and then even three times a day, I mean, they're, those are people in Palm Springs that are pushing that, and I'd like us to have the benefit of more access to the community without the use of cars.
And I'd like for us to have more input about where it should be located.
Absolutely, oh, absolutely.
Rather than have it just kind of head down...
I wouldn't dream of you not being involved in that.
Rest of Anderson is the only consideration.
But, that sounds good.
I've heard a motion to continue this item with a further update and a detailed discussion at our next council meeting.
And a little bit earlier on the agenda, so people who care can...
We will attempt to do that. Jarv?
Can I add that we already sent out a request for proposal, and we should have a proposal back by, by next week, I would be happy to, to bring into the city council the next meeting for the council to approve the request for proposal, for consultants to start doing feasibility study, to look at the location, to look at costs, and all information that you're looking for, but I'm not an expert in, in train station or stop, we would like to get an expert on board, and after they have a chance to do a feasibility study, then I'll be happy to bring it back to the council and with the report.
And what, at what point would public input be the most useful?
When we have completed the feasibility study.
Do we have an estimate as to the cost of that?
We should get it by next week.
Okay. Has the motion been seconded?
I have not heard a second yet.
Seconded. I don't, I don't know if you made it or I made it, I'm happy to be whichever.
I'll do one and a half.
Alright.
Moved and seconded to put this, to continue this to the next council meeting for further discussion and public airing, for lack of a better word. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Alright, that carries unanimously. Item 14, item 14, direction to staff on University Village and Orchard Park, specific plans, would like to ask staff to present what our options are, and what direction as far as moving forward on this, and like to our city attorney to help us out on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to respond on that. As you're aware, the Friends of Loma Linda lawsuit went to the Court of Appeal, the Court of Appeal issued a decision which went back to the trial court, and we now have an order from the trial court directing that the two referenda on Orchard Park and University Village either be rescinded by this city council or placed on a future ballot for a vote of the electors. My recommendation to you tonight is that this be placed on perhaps your next agenda, and that the property owners and affected parties be notified that at that time you will decide whether or not to rescind the two specific plans and their related matters, or place the matters on the upcoming election agenda.
Any questions, looking for direction from council?
I have a question about the letter that Louis directed to us. They're recommending that the order of business be, that the rescission occur prior to any changes in the general plan, or they said that it would be a taking otherwise. What is, what is the legal status of a specific plan that has been rescinded and therefore is as though it had never existed? Would the subject of a taking even be an issue at that point, just as a point of law? Or would it be considered to be, are we starting with a fresh sheet of paper? Are we starting with the 2,575 units and have to make excuses for any kind of reductions?
Well, the effect of the court decision is that the referendum process will go forward, and that puts a stay on any development, and so those specific plans cannot go forward unless and until there is a vote approving those projects. So, I think it is appropriate for you to make the decision on this issue before going forward with finalizing the general plan, that's why I would recommend that that be agendized for your next meeting for that purpose. And my understanding is that both of the developers for these projects, in the Court of Appeal, requested that the Court of Appeal include in its decision the option for the city council to rescind, and it's also my understanding that they're in agreement that the projects, as previously approved, cannot go forward in any event under Measure V, and therefore, they are in agreement with the rescission.
So then their, their statement that if we did things out of order that would constitute a taking is just with respect to the, being out of order, but not necessarily to the magnitude of the changes?
Correct, I think they understand that those projects as previously approved are, for all practical purposes, dead at this point for various reasons.
Because I can see in their request, at the tail end, they say, what they would prefer is a rescission prior to the general plan update, but then that, that no specificity be given to special project area D until they've had an opportunity to deposit a substitute specific plan. Is that something that we would wait for, or what?
Well, that's within your discretion, but once the existing specific plans are rescinded, there's no entitlement that would be existing, and therefore, it's within the discretion of the council to make plans and go forward with the project, with the general plan, or they may come in with a new specific plan, in the meantime, I'm not aware that that would be imminent.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If I might interject, I believe that general plan law requires that land use designations have density and intensity included, and to leave it just as Special Plan Area D as basically an empty bag doesn't meet state law requirements. So, we would have to at least provide some table, as we're suggesting, maybe not with the conceptual map that was included, but we have to give it a density and/or intensity if you're going to include residential and non-residential uses.
Okay.
And then if they don't, if they want to come in with something later and propose a general plan amendment, or something that coincides with what is consistent with the general plan at that time, they have that option.
Okay, so it sounds like their request is a wish, but not necessarily an expectation.
I think it's a wish, but I don't know that it's doable.
I was trying to find that letter to see exactly what that language was, but if you choose to rescind, obviously, you still have to do the general plan, and this property has to be included in that.
As I understand it, the recommendation tonight is simply to direct staff, if that is our consensus, to analyze and bring back further information on the options of rescission of the specific plan or an election process, and is that agreeable with the council to direct staff and Mr. Haldaway to bring back that with a detailed discussion at our next meeting?
Yes, I would just further add that the, I guess the gentleman, Mr. Leon Swells, makes a number of arguments regarding that particular project, and why he believes that, you know, we should do something different to it, and I would like for some direction from staff and city attorney as to whether any of those arguments have legal merit and how to further proceed, because I think that's gonna perhaps fall into the decision-making that we may have to make at the next council meeting as to whether we want to put up for a ballot, or do we want it to rescind it. So, I would like to get further clarification from our legal counsel as to what are some of the, whether any of these arguments being made in this letter are, you know, do they hold legal muster?
Do we have a consensus? Any objection to direction of staff and legal counsel to bring back information on those two options at our next meeting related to those two projects? I believe we have a consensus and direction on that. Item fifteen, report and recommendations regarding economic stimulus package, and I think we're all aware of some of the developments in Washington on this, and trying to at least get something lined up that we might be eligible for. Comments from staff?
No, Mayor and council, this, like I say in the report, we're just looking for direction. There's been a lot in the paper, there's been, I get daily reports about the economic stimulus package and how the rules are changing daily, so we know, we don't know as much as we, we know, we know less than we know, if that makes sense.
I think my only comment to that is that, given the litany of list of all the various cities and what they would like, you probably would like for us to do a lot of praying, hoping that some of those.
We would be more than fortunate to get any one of these projects funded, given the number of projects that I've seen from other cities and the amounts of monies that they say we're gonna get for these projects.
There's only one sure thing, if we don't ask, I think it's a certainty we'll get nothing. So, I think it's appropriate. The only other real quick comment I had, you know, obviously, we've done a huge amount with our solar electric already, but, you know, it seems to be a big focus. Is there any way we could put together a brief proposal for some other areas, like Corporate Yard, with some more generation somewhere? Can we just put that on the list, and whether we can, you know, flesh it out quickly enough to conclude it?
If that's your desire, we can put it together. We have a deadline, our lobbyists is telling us they want things to them by the 13th of February.
I will put it on the list if that's agreeable with the rest of the council, and leave it to your discretion what you can do.
I also want to do some more solar at some of the water, at some of the wells.
Any further discussion? Otherwise, ready for direction from council?
With that addition, I'd go ahead and recommend approval of the list to seek funds.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. I believe it carries. Hard to believe, but I think we're finally down to reports of councilmen. Peterson?
Quick comment, I think that we ought to consider at some point what several other cities around us are considering, and that is having to do with vacant housing, that we try to work up an ordinance of some kind that, or whatever it would take.
We're already working on it.
We already, that would.
The AR committee discussed that yesterday, I think, or a couple days ago. I saw it on the, today, okay, I saw that.
You know what I was gonna say, yeah? You know what I was gonna say?
No, sir.
Any further?
You said you want an ordinance on vacant properties, and we're working on an ordinance.
Any further comments from?
Having to do with maintenance of it.
Council. Seeing none, any reports of officers? Seeing none, I believe it's in order to adjourn city council.
Redevelopment agency is still called, still in order. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
None.
Are there any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Move on to scheduled items. We've already conducted the joint public hearing, General, for your delectation are the minutes of December nine. I move that we approve the minutes for December nine?
Second.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries. Now, we have the Loma Linda Chamber of Commerce quarter report, request for disbursement of funds. What's the pleasure of the agency?
Move it. Second.
Okay, any other comment? Okay. Any opposition? Seeing none, it's ordered. So, we are adjourned. Thank you.